All right. Want to close that door, please, someone? To the 14, Jim? All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Wareham Zoning Board of Appeals for tonight's meeting, November 30, 2022, at 6:30 p.m. And we are at the room 320 Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Roadway, H.M.A.S. I'm going to call the meeting to order, make a roll call. My far left, Mr. Richard Sample. My far right, Ms. Baraka the Bernese, our clerk, Mr. Jim Akabachi, myself, the Chair, Nazir Akulasi. We have four members tonight. Just to let you know, who doesn't like to be heard before has the right to be heard with five members, so he can continue. He does not need to be, or she, to be heard with four members. We'll open and continue. Before we go forward, we have some quick business to do with the meetings for 11-9-2022. Oh, we have five members. So for the record, the Regent of Board member, Mr. Jake Morrison, just came in, so we have full board. On the minutes for 11-9-2022. Hi, Jake.
On the minutes, I've reviewed them. There was one small error, which I hand-edited. Other than that, I move to accept as presented.
I have a motion to accept the minutes. Do I have a second?
Was the error, the voting numbers on there, was it?
Four-one-zero.
No, it was just a comment.
Okay.
Did you see something?
I think that was the previous one, Rich, you're talking about. Look at it.
It just was with the, I think we were talking about View Street, and it went to a motion, and it said, "The motion passed unanimously," but it was 4-0-1. That's the only thing I picked out.
Which one was that? I'm sorry, View Street?
That's the continued hearing for the Dos Amigos. That was to rescind our prior motion.
Oh, yeah, we went back and forth.
But other than that, everything else is checked out.
Is that the second page of the minutes? And she's got, it looks like she's got it corrected, because it says 4-0-1 on my copy. Right about here on the page?
Yep.
Rick?
So unanimous?
It wasn't, no, I don't have it as unanimous. I had 4-0-1. Was it unanimous?
I don't know, it doesn't say it.
No, it says here, it says 4-0-1.
Okay. Okay, I'm good with it.
You got it?
Yep.
So she corrected it?
Yep.
Okay, so I have a motion by Jim. Do I have a second?
I second.
Second by Rich. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, oppose, abstain, so minutes carries. On the continued public hearing for Mr. D.O.Lim on the 2618 Cranberry Highway. Jimmy?
We've received a letter requesting an extension until the second meeting in December. That's not available. The applicant will extend until the first meeting in January. They've also, under a separate letterhead from the attorney for the applicant, they've waived the, oh, they've extended the time for the decision, so we don't have to worry about running up against the clock.
Okay. Is anyone here for this matter?
We have one.
Mr. Conti, you want to come forward? Name and address for the record.
Christopher Conti, 2614-2616 Cranberry Highway.
Okay.
Director Butter to this property. And I guess my question is about procedure. The original application was for a special permit, then it was decided that he would have to do a site plan review. I guess I have not received any, I haven't seen any public notice, or as a Butter received any information about a site plan review in the mail.
So he needs to be re-advertized, republication?
He needs to.
I assume he would need to re-advertise and send out a notification.
So we'll make that note. It's on the record now, if it needs to be re-advertized. The Secretary will let him know, and then he'll have that burden. So it may move the continuance up.
Okay.
Well, if he re-advertizes, he starts from scratch.
It's 30 days and all that, Jim.
So we'll pass this notice and see what they say.
So, but as of right now, you ought to be here at the second, or check the agenda for the second meeting in December.
Sure.
December, what?
In the meantime, if it's.
January.
No, he's asked for, he's asked to be extended to the second meeting in December, which usually is canceled, because it's the night before Christmas, and if that's not.
No, if I may, second, it's the 28th, second.
28th, so it'll be fine. So the second, he's asked for the second meeting in December. If in the meantime, it needs to be re-advertized, et cetera, you know, just check with one of us, if we find out, we'll let you know.
Check with Sonja.
Or check with Sonja, so you don't have to come here on the 28th, just to be sent.
In the meantime, are they allowed to operate their businesses, they've been doing for a year and a half?
Yeah, there's been no cease and desist issued.
That's on, the Commissioner will have to take action, not us, for right now.
Right, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else would like to speak on that matter? Okay, Richard, what do you think? Are you okay with continuing?
I'm okay with continuing.
Jake?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Yep.
Veronica?
Yes.
Can I have a motion?
And so moved.
So we have a motion to continue 29-22, 2618 Cranberry Highway, till December 28, 2022. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Richard. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain.
5-0-0.
All right, we'll move to the public hearing, 37-22, New England Center for Psychiatry on 118 High Street.
I'm gonna, yeah, I gotta read that in, so just sit tight for a minute. 37-22? Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on November 30, 2022, at 6:30 p.m. in room 320 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Roadway, H.M.A.S., 02571, to consider petition number 37-22 for a variance from the requirements of Article 3, Table 320, under the, excuse me for a minute, under the Wareham zoning bylaws, New England Center, 2 New England Center for Psychiatric and Addiction Disorders, care of attorney Michael McVeigh of 50 homers who are from New Bedford, M.A., seeking a change of use, proposing to construct an apartment on the second floor of the structure while the first floor is used as offices in the existing property located at 118 High Street, Wareham, M.A. This appears on Assessors Map 47, lot 1022A, in the Wareham Village 2 zoning district.
All right, also name and address for the record.
Attorney Mike McVeigh, Marky Washlaw, for the applicant.
Ma'am, are you going to be speaking?
I mean, if you, yeah, so.
Yeah, just your name and address for the record, in case you.
I'm Ilana Berman, and I'm a psychiatrist, and we.
I just need your name and address for that.
Okay.
Okay.
It's 25 West Cushing Street, Providence, Rhode Island.
Okay.
That's my address.
All right, Counselor, go ahead.
First off, good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. What we're asking for tonight is an exception from a non-permitted use on table, located on 320, specifically the, having an apartment in a mixed-use building. But to be more clear, what exactly Dr. Berman wants to do is just to operate her business on the first floor and host a tenant on the second floor. And by way of a little background, we had approached a previous building commissioner back in February. I spoke with him, explained what we were doing, went through the portal process, and this project was approved. He determined it was residential use only. Dr. Berman went ahead and hired a contractor who completed most of the work until early September. She received a stop-work order from the new building commissioner, so we proceeded to apply for this variance. Like I said, the work is about 90, 95% done.
It is completed. So what the idea was is to have an office on the first floor, and one of my staff to be staying on the second floor in order to take care of the property. So we were given the okay, given, we talked with somebody before.
Previous building commissioner.
And they felt that that was fine and didn't need a variance. So primarily, what I want to do is to make sure that somebody is on, of the staff that I employ, that stays on the property, to be able to be taken care of.
Okay. Counselor?
Yeah, for a number of reasons. At one, primarily, that we'd like, we asked that this board would consider this variance. You know, one, we know Wareham needs affordable housing, and there's an available unused unit, fully furnished, ready to go, at this home. We're not, she's not going to perform any exterior amendments to the House. You know, there's a lot of money has been, you know, invested in the property and in the renovations. You know, I know for a fact that the Wareham Redevelopment Authority has published some data saying that, you know, the intent of the Wareham 2 district is to promote, you know, small businesses and also to increase modest housing. I think this would achieve exactly that.
Okay. All right, very well. This is in Wareham Village 2. It's an allowed use, one or two family by right. I'm just trying to see home occupation with the definition psychiatry.
Home occupation is also an allowed use. I looked it up.
It is, understood. All right, so why?
And a business by an occupant of the building is also allowed use. The reason he's been denied by the new building commissioner, just for the record, attorney McVeigh had contacted me prior to tonight for some clarification on this, and I dug into it pretty deeply. I think he's been denied under Article 3, because if you look at Wareham Village 2 under uses, this could be considered a mixed use, with a residence and a business in the same structure. And if you look at mixed use, mixed use has a big N, as allowed use, no, require a variance as a mixed use. Okay? So he's looking for a variance for the use, and we just need to say, "Yeah, okay, you can have a mixed use there, and he can go home, and we can go on."
Okay, I could see here on table, okay, right here, occupation, home occupation on Wareham Village. It's a yes, yes, yes. All right, home occupation, which is, in this matter, is a home occupation, because you're running the business, or one of your tenants will be watching the business. All right, let's go on, Ms. Baraka.
So I thought of it the same way as I was listening to it, that it's a home occupation. My only question would be, what does the relationship of the occupant have to have with the occupation that's occurring downstairs?
I would say, as long as she works in the clinic, the occupant upstairs.
Yeah, that's usually, it's like a maintenance person that takes care of the grounds and the, you know, because I have two other offices, and they help me with maintenance of the other two offices.
Okay. And you are the psychiatrist, ma'am?
Yes.
Jimmy?
I've, like I said, I spent, I spent more time than this thing deserves, in my opinion, looking into it, to be sure. And, you know, this applicant could have simply come to us and said, "I want to change it from a business use to a residential use, which is allowed in the neighborhood." And we would have said, "Yeah, sure." Then she could have come back and said, "Hey, you know what? I want a home occupation. Oh, look, that's allowed. Done." So, you know, I won't call this a frivolous application. I'm sure the town's happy to have her 750 bucks to get our okey-dokey, but other than that, I think we're good to just grant this request.
Jake?
Nothing at this time.
Richard?
Nothing at this time, sir.
In the public, anyone want to speak in favor of this matter? In favor? Anyone against? Okay, here's what we could do before we close. What we could do, overturn the Commissioner letter. That's all what we could do under, because under table 330, it is allowed use, the home occupation in Wareham Village. So again, I grant the variance, we're just going to overturn his decision.
So if we overturn his decision, how does that, what happens if she continues, if she has this apartment, and somebody that's not related to the business wants to live there? Are they allowed?
Why, that's not before us tonight.
Well, I think it is, because they're asking for a mixed use.
And they are allowed, okay.
You follow what I'm saying?
So you want to make a variance and condition it?
I'd like to give them the variance and not, the whole neighborhood's all residential. I think it's, I get it. I get why the building commissioner did what he did. He did the right thing, but I think it's punitive to the applicant to just tell her that forever and ever, in order to run that business, somebody that lives there has to work at the business. That's my personal opinion. I don't care how we do it, I'd just like to see it, you know.
I think if we overturn it and say that it's a.
Home occupation.
Home occupation, not a mixed use. I don't think we should change the use of the building.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yeah. Go ahead.
So I feel like that would be the direction that we should take it.
So you're okay with the variance to grant that?
Not a variance. I don't think this is a variance, but I don't think it's necessarily a mixed use. It's a home occupation, which is an allowed use, right?
Right.
Which doesn't require a variance.
Right.
So we're not changing it to mixed use, which would be more of a general commercial.
What's wrong with you overturning the decision?
Yes.
I would like the board to consider this as a mixed use.
Yeah.
So that she's not pigeonholed to just, this is the high likelihood of where she's going to rent it to, but because we don't want to run afoul later on, if something were to happen, I would like the board to consider this as a mixed use.
Building. You want to consider it as a mixed use?
Correct.
Okay.
Because we had all kinds of issues with the building inspector. So they want to be clear, because when I tell them that it's my office, and then they say that somebody sleeps out there, they feel like it's a mixed-use building. And the old time, a psychiatrist or physician was able to have an office and also have a place that they lived in, in that same building. But apparently now, in Massachusetts, things are very strict, and I want to make sure there is no confusion, that somebody may sleep there while there is an office downstairs.
Okay.
So it's not a home office use? That's what I was asking, if there was a legality on who it was that was upstairs. So Jim, you're saying if it's a variance, that it has to be somebody that's working for this company? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying if it's a variance, we're granting a variance for a mixed use, and then she's not pigeonholed into the home occupation. Upstairs could be Santa Claus, and downstairs could be Tinkerbell.
Well, so I feel for the applicant, because this was already in process. However, what's the hardship?
Well, I would say the hardship there is one or two families allowed by right. So if we restrict it to just one unit upstairs, and the psychiatrist, it's not a grocery store, it's maybe one patient in an hour, so it's not like this big traffic. I know that building very well, they have plenty of parking, it's a nice building. I don't think will impact this area, and there's dentists on that street. As you all know, there's a bunch of dentists.
My dentist.
So I don't think it's an impact. But we can condition it, one resident and one office.
Well, how about if we, right, restrict the mixed use to an office? I would fine with that, so that it's not some kind of, it could be any kind of business that can be thrown in there.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly.
No strip club?
Not there.
Richard?
I'm following along with the conversation.
You okay with that?
I'm, yes.
You okay with that? Counselor, you good with that?
We're good.
Anything before we close?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I make a motion, we close the public portion of this hearing?
Do I have a second for the close?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Bernese. All in favor to close, say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain, it's closed, and what's the wishes on the variance?
I make a motion to grant a variance to convert the build into a mixed use.
Any discussion or conditions on that?
Standard conditions with the stipulation that the business on the first floor be a business use style of business, office space, not a retail space.
Or, yeah, professional office.
Professional, yeah, doctor, lawyer, accountant, Indian giver.
And to be restricted to one unit only above it. So one unit and one business. All right, Counselor?
Understood.
All right. On that motion, do I have a second?
I second.
Second by Mr. Sample. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, oppose, abstain, it carries. Thank you. 5-0-0.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Next public hearing, 28-22, Richard and Anita Padula.
5-0-0, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Richard and Anita Padula, appeal of building permit on 9 Murphy Street.
I'm not going to read you guys in until I get the papers from the last one.
You gave me two of those.
I gave you two?
Jake?
That's because I like you twice.
Yeah, went with it.
And this was in there?
Yes, it was.
Ooh.
You need help? I think it's good.
Hand that out. Ooh, shame on me, that's supposed to stay in the folder. That's everything on that last one? We'll sign that, I'll go in, or Nazir will go in and sign it, and we'll sign it next week, or next meeting, after it's typed up formally. Get all this done. Padula?
Padula, yes.
Did we say that wrong? Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on November 30, 2022, at 6:30 p.m. in room 320 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Roadway, H.M.A.S., 02571, to consider petition number 38-22, requesting an appeal of a building permit which was approved by the prior building commissioner. The applicant, Richard and Anita Padula, care of attorney Jillian Morton, 184 Morton Street, seek an immediate cease and desist at the property located at 9 Murphy Street, Wareham, M.A. Appears on Assessors Map 50B, lot 1/3, in the R-30 zoning district.
All right, Counselor, name for the record?
Attorney Jillian Morton, 184 Main Street.
All right, I have a conflict in this matter. I'll moderate, but I cannot vote, so what's your wishes?
Considering, I would like to open the hearing. I know there's quite a bit of people here that would like to be heard.
Okay.
If we could do that, and perhaps continue, but a lot of people have come out to speak, so I think it would behoove us to open it to let them be heard.
Okay, very well, let's start.
All right, thank you. So we read, we're here today looking for an appeal of a building permit. The property is 9 Murphy Street here in Wareham. I represent a Butters, the Padules, and what we're looking to do is, there was a building permit issued by the prior building inspector for the property for a two-family duplex structure on the lot. I tried to give some visual aids within their packets, and some bigger aids as well, so you can see what we're looking at. We're looking at many different lots on a 1939 subdivision plan. So that's what's behind me, and I can move, if you can see. Let me face it towards you guys.
And I have a smaller one.
And you have a smaller one? Yeah, and I can move this. So what I've highlighted behind me is actually the parcel where the duplex is going. The building commissioner, the prior building commissioner issued this permit with the understanding that it was approximately 3.28 acres. For that, they're including the other smaller parcels, which are closer to the cove. So these streets, as you can see within your packet in this plan in front of me, is what the owner submitted for the building permit. On this plan, the engineers even put these roads on there, the unconstructed roads, but those roads were a part of this land court 1939 plan. So I did meet with the building, current building commissioner to discuss this, and he did say that this would be a matter for zoning in order to repeal it. So I, that's why we're here in front of you today. And what we do believe is that this does violate the zoning. So he is the zoning enforcement officer who would be able to issue a cease and desist on this project and repeal this building permit. A building commissioner can appeal a permit, per statute, within six years of issuance of that permit. We understand now that the actual builder has started construction, there are footings, well, we applied back in October, so we're here now, looking for a cease and desist. The parcel highlighted here, and within your packet, and on this sheet, as you can see, is approximately a little over 32,000 square feet. This district allows a two-family duplex, 45,000 square feet. So it's my understanding, and we believe, is that it's in violation of Article 621 of our zoning laws. So there have been applications in front of you, which are on smaller lots, but they have to go through that variance process. So at the minimum, I believe a cease and desist should be issued, and then also, they need, if they do want to continue, they would need to have to go in front of you for a variance.
All right, for the record, Mr. Kabachi, our clerk, would chair. I'll be as, like, as a consultant assistant.
Okay.
All right, go ahead, Jim.
Are you done?
I'd like to pause, yeah, and see what the feedback is, and I can go more into the narrative. You have a lot of materials within you.
I get it, and I had the opportunity to study this while I was doing four other things, so it had my undivided 25% attention, and, or was it 20%? Four other things, yeah. So, but I get it. So your argument is technically, they needed a variance to be granted a two-family. I'm sure the opposition's argument is going to be, they own all this other land, and they don't need a variance, but what I have learned is, this is land courted land, and the roads do exist, so it's not contiguous. So it would appear that your argument has standing, I guess is the word, has merit, you know, is.
Yeah, when I'm looking at this case, understanding his point of view, but.
I've seen both sides of the argument, and I've heard through the grapevine, just for the rest of the board's edification as well, that the real basis of this suit is the fact that across this land, at some point, along one border, or along one way over by lot 68 on this plan, do you have lot 68 showing on your plan?
Um.
On the waterfront?
Sixty, way over there.
Way over there.
So there's Columbia.
So, yeah, at the end of Columbia Street, which I know probably dissolves and doesn't really exist, but at the end, if we look at Columbia Street and look all the way at the end, lot 68, which these folks own, which the, which the two-family people that are building actually own, but it's not contiguous with what they own, what I'm led to believe is that there's a bunch of neighbors that put their boats, their skips and boats, and this and that, and the other thing there, and the bunch of neighbors that put their boats there have been told to get their boats off the property, and I'm led to believe if they were allowed to keep their boats there, this whole suit would go away and the construction could continue. So saying that out loud, so that all my fellow board members can hear me, because at some point, I'm going to suggest we continue this, and I'm going to suggest that the people that own the property and the people in the neighborhood have a conversation, and if this can be resolved without a decision from the board, that would be preferable. And then that resolution would be that the people building the house and the neighbors come to some kind of an agreement, whether the boats are going to stay or going to go. If I understand it correctly, if the people in the neighborhood who have been putting their skips, et cetera, at the end of this Columbia Street, aren't going to be granted access, they're going to continue with the suit, but if, maybe if they were granted access, this whole suit might go away. And I personally always like it when neighbors are able to work things out amongst themselves without lawyers and zoning boards and town officials and building commissioners. Does the rest of the board follow me on that? So. So, that said, that said, are you the people with the, are you the?
These are the Padules, yes.
The boat people, the?
The boat people.
You're the boat people?
Yeah.
That's one of us, yes.
Jim, may I say something?
Yeah, you got to have the, you lift your hand, you have the floor, he'll give you permission to speak. You can just interrupt if you don't mind.
Yeah, you state your name and go ahead, get it off your chest.
I'm Rick Padula. I've been in Wareham for forty years, with a lot of my neighbors been here twenty and thirty years. We, we go down Columbia, if it ain't just to keep the boats there. We had an eight-foot path for forty years down there where people go with their children for starfish.
Let me interrupt you just for a minute.
Yeah.
For a few thousand years, the people in Europe said, if you sail west, you'll fall off the edge of the earth.
Yeah.
They weren't right. So, your forty years use on land courted land, go ahead.
Well, the thing is, we just want access like we have for forty years, with probably thirty people every weekend take their dinghies, they're sailing, their grandchildren down to the water, get on our dinghies and go look for shellfish, stuff like that. That's all we want, is a path to get to where our dinghies are, and it's right off of Columbia. But the harbor master came down, he said, if you use Columbia, you're going to a mudhole, it's not passable. So, we just wanted to do the same path we've used all our lives, really.
So, let me ask you a question. Where's the path that you've used for forty years, be it legally or illegally?
From Columbia, Columbia's the street down there, and it shoots over about?
She's right behind our address, which would be.
Right there, she's got it.
Right over on.
I see Columbia, and it goes right through, I see, I see where it goes through the ripples of the gradient change, and it, it looks like lot sixty-eight and lot six are probably underwater. So, it looks like you're going down Columbia, so where, where are you not on Columbia?
We go to Columbia, and then we just have to hang left like a hundred feet and finish the path that's been there.
So, you're going left more into the, the person's land?
Yeah.
Not less into, you're not going away from the water, you're going back?
Right, we're going toward.
I'm looking at Handy Avenue here, so you're taking a left onto Handy Avenue by that plan, and then going across his land more? But let him, yeah, let him see the. So, you're going down Columbia Street, heading for the water.
Right.
And if I'm looking at this properly, you're hanging a left which would be following the path of what they have here, Handy Street.
Right, but Handy is not really passable right now because it's like blocked off.
Well, I know it's not passable, but it's your argument for denying this guy his building permit, so you can't have it both ways.
Oh, no, we just really.
You know, so you're telling me the reason he can't have his building permit is because these streets are streets and, and.
No, I'm, I'm only saying because the, where he's putting his home, that's fine, I don't care what he really builds, I'm, I'm not like that, but the streets on the side of his house are passageways to the water, Cove, Ferring, Handy, right off of Murphy Street. And they're all passageways, and they're.
Hang on just a minute.
Sure.
Land court, he's right, those streets, technically anybody could walk on those streets.
Correct.
The guy can't say, that's my land.
If I may, Mr. Jim.
Columbia, Handy, Ferring, Wa, what is this, Warren, Cove?
Yeah.
Those are all public ways.
Yes, sir.
Correct.
Okay, okay. I just want to be, you know, I'm just asking.
That's exactly.
Let it be heard by everybody in the room.
Yep.
Okay, including the person that's trying to build a house here, and I, I see both sides of this. I mean, I buy multiacres and I'm putting up a house, and now the neighbors are telling me what I can do on my land, you know?
Right.
And, and I can see how the person that's building the house looks at Handy and Ferring and Columbia and Warren and Cove as potentially being his land.
Right.
And I can also see how the court would look at it, or how I would perceive the court, land court would look at it. And I understand the neighbors, and that's why I went the route I went early on here before we had people up here. And I still would like to be able to see the person that's building the house, and the neighbors come to some kind of a resolution without our input, but if we have to make a decision, we're more than capable of making a decision.
Mr. Padula, may I?
As I see, as I see, just a minute, Counselor, as I see it, as I personally, not, I'm not speaking for the whole board, and I hope that the person that's building the, the house here that you're against is here and hears me, as, as I see it, people on Webster Street are unchallenged, and the people in Columbia Street is a right all the way down to the water. So, the big question, if I, if I understand the water fountain story properly, the big argument is whether the skips and so forth that the neighbors have are going to stay at the end of Columbia Street, or whether the landowner is going to insist they're gone. But that, anyway, go ahead, Counselor, you want to say something?
Yeah, I just, you know, one thing I just want to get on record, I appreciate that, that sentiment, I think that that could be something that we could certainly look into. Land court property, there's land court property and then just recorded land, so, as many of you know, the land court property has to go through the land court to get certified. So, one of the things when I started looking at this case was that this, had this gone through the land court to get a new plan completed, so that either whether it went through the planning board, then gone through the land court, either way, the Butters would have had notice that this was all happening.
Right.
So, it's, that's part of the process of why we're here, so the public can have the input on what's being built in their back door, you know, in their back, in the backyard. So, for us, it, it's a situation of trying to put something in that we, that was essentially, I know it was the prior building commissioner, but how the Butters weren't, weren't really giving notice, people to, to have any under, you know, any input or public input, so I appreciate you giving them that forum tonight.
No, and they're going to have their opportunity, you know, they'll all get their chance to speak, I just.
But a new land court plan would fix essentially these issues. Now, this lot did have a land court process start back, looking at the land court, I think it was back in two thousand and ten, and it was never, it was never completed. So, this is the only plan we have of record.
No, I got it, and, and I'm looking at this little one here.
Correct, yeah.
And, and I know I only flashed it before your eyes quickly, but everything that I have here in yellow is what the defendant, I guess, to your, to you to owns. So, all that said, before I, before I continue to monopolize the microphone here, Veronica, do you have any questions at this point?
Not yet, I read some of what.
You reserve the right to, yeah.
Yes.
And how about down the other end of the table here? Richard and Jacob?
I'm all set right now.
Jacob? Okay.
If I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, well, let's, the board should really concentrate, I do understand the neighbors and everything, but should concentrate about the permit, and that's the most important thing, the zoning bylaws, which is, I think, and the density, that's where it really matters. If the building permit was given, I do not recall coming to the board, I wasn't, and even if I come, I wouldn't be on the board, but that definitely would require variance, as the attorney's saying. So, this is, that's something that needs to be addressed, that's the main concern.
Yeah, I, it appears, it appears to me, and again, I'm not, I'm, I'm speaking, it appears to me, and the board would have to agree with me, it appears to me at minimum, the person building the two-family on a one-family parcel of land may retroactively need a variance to continue with a two-family, or it would be rescinded back to a single-family permit. Maybe I'm not saying it exactly right. What I'd, what I'd really like is, before we close tonight, to give, I don't know if I want to hear from all the neighbors, because I think the neighbors have been well represented, I, I'm not going to deny anybody the opportunity to speak, I'd like to hear from the people building the house, where they stand on this, and how they feel about trying to talk with the neighbors. Is the, is the person with the building permit here, here present? Do you mind coming up and giving your side of the?
I'd like to have the other people get their.
You, for the record, you got to be on the mic.
Yeah, we need, you and I can't yell across the room, unfortunately, sir.
You get set right there.
You can sit over there at that one if you want. We won't put you up and down and up and down, and. Just say your name and, and address and, for the record, and I hear, I know where you're going.
Michael Anthony Marzullo, one-fifty-five Candy Lane, Brockton, Mass.
Okay, mister.
Home of Champions.
Home of the Champions, okay. So, I heard you, you'd really like to yield to the rest of the neighborhood and let them all come up and state their piece before you state yours, and I'm okay with that. So, stay right there, I know you guys look quite comfortable, but there's only so many microphones, and I can tell by the number of bodies in the room, that they're not all here, because my birthday passed.
No, no, that's, that's okay, they could use this chair.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
You want to?
Whoever wants to speak can come to that chair.
You want to make room behind you there? Because it looks like you're going to have quite a bit of traffic.
I'll, I'll go first.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you for volunteering.
Yeah, no problem, I got things to do too. My name's Tony Petrucci, I'm a resident on Barn Street. This is all news to me, I just kind of got wind of it. I guess my question, I support everything that's going on down there, I love the new building, I think it's great for the property value, the neighborhood, super, super job. Didn't hear anything about a two-family, I'm hearing that tonight, and I just don't understand, being a neighbor down there, that land that we're talking about, to me, is useless, it's marsh land, it's, so I don't understand, I'm a little gray on the area on why he wants that land. I know he owns it, I, I guess it's his, I don't know, that's, that's my question.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
But I, it just, someone's got to say more about the two-family.
Thank you.
No problem.
Who's next? One at a time, please, and if you guys are all here to speak, you know, whoever wants to speak next, come get in queue and stand here so that we can move right along.
And we're having all in favor right now, correct?
Pardon me?
Are we doing an all in favor?
I don't care if they're in favor or opposed, if they want to speak, let them speak.
If I may, these are in favor of the attorney to deny the building permit, or to re, to rescind it, or to cease and desist.
Everybody will be, feel better doing it that way, I'm okay with that.
My name is Amy Carr, nine Barn Street, Wareham. We are a very close group of neighbors and very friendly with one another, and have always been very friendly, new neighbors come in, we introduce ourselves. I think I was the first person, when the land was purchased, I was out on the marsh, my husband was on his boat, and I was approached by the owner's wife, and was screamed at about the boats being parked there, and I own all this land, you can't come here anymore. If I wanted to have a friendly relationship with my neighbors, a new neighbor, I would have said, hi, my name is, we just bought the land at nine Murphy Street, where do you live? I live here, like, this is how we've all introduced ourselves to each other and become friendly. And I was approached in a very aggressive way by Mr. Marzullo's wife, who screamed and yelled at me when I was standing in the back of, not, on his land, which I didn't know at that point, we didn't know, we thought it was marsh land, we thought it was conservation land, we didn't know that it was purchased by anybody because we didn't get any information when that was happening. I knew those lots were for sale, those three lots on Murphy Street, I didn't know the marsh behind my house of thirty years was considered land even for sale. We've always just walked back there, I've raised two children there, I've gotten into my boat every day in the summer with my children, my now great nephew, we go fishing, we take our boat out from there, and it's a big part of our family and a very close-knit group of neighbors, as you can see, the amount of people that have showed up here in support of our petition to stop the building of the home. We are, would gladly be happy to talk to you and your wife, but I was verbally screamed at by her.
Ma'am, ma'am, you have to address all your comments to the board.
Oh, sorry, okay. So, I'm just saying that I, my first impression of meeting a new neighbor was being verbally attacked and screamed at.
Okay, but we're not, we're not, we're not, we're here for zoning, we're not here to talk about emotions.
Okay, but that's just.
Sorry, no, no, I don't mean to be.
No, that's fine, I just want you to know how you suggested that the best thing would be for us to get together and work out something, and I'm not sure that can happen with the way that we've been approached.
Well, are you willing to discuss it?
I'm, I'm totally willing to discuss it.
Thank you.
If I can access my boat, I'm willing to discuss it. I just would like to discuss it, yes.
Okay, okay.
Do I have to press any buttons or anything?
Just, you just have to say your name and your address and.
Stuart Weeks, three-twenty-two Washington Street, Hanover, Massachusetts.
You say the right things, you can push buttons with your words.
Okay, let's push some buttons then. All right, I'm going to reiterate what Amy said, you want us to get together with them and hash it out. We've, we've tried it, we've tried it, they have just been incredibly aggressive, nasty, sweeping their arms over the cove and our houses and saying, you can't come here.
I've got the point about the temperament between the, the neighbors and.
All right, so I don't think there's going to be any friendly talk figuring out.
Let me ask you, let me ask you a question, would you be willing to have a friendly talk if the person building the house so agreed?
All right, the, the thing I want to point out is, the path really that has been going down there is through lots thirteen, twelve, and seven, all right? It's along that line, okay?
Okay, it's not on Columbia Street, you're actually, you're actually going through the.
Yeah.
Through the man's private property.
Yeah, because, well, yeah, but it's also, these are roads here, which he doesn't own, correct?
No, he, he doesn't own the roads, and I've already told you that my opinion is that you have a right to be on the roads. My opinion is that you don't have a right to be on his land.
Okay, well, I would be willing, you know, it'd be perfectly happy with all of us if he would just say, okay, you can go down there, right? And there'd be no issue, we'd be happy with it. But, you know, he's been calling the police on people, having them come down there, he's put up no trespassing signs, you know, saying that we can't get out there.
Okay.
And the other thing that wasn't addressed yet was, that's a mooring field, it's not a bunch of rowboats on the, on the beach, only. There's a mooring field that we have town moorings out there that we are being denied access to get to. We'd have to go all the way down Murphy Street, all the way down to the beach, and then we'd have to walk around the entire cove and swim out to our boats. All right?
If I may, if I may, Jim?
Well, I, I understand, and I understand the total rights, and I understand that people have a mooring, have a right to access their mooring via the water, there's no law on this land that says you're allowed to walk across somebody else's property to get to your mooring. A mooring doesn't give you the right to trespass. Go ahead, Naz.
Why, why you can't go on Columbia Street, use Columbia Street?
We can, but it's, it ends up in a, in basically a swamp, right? The path that has been there for who knows how many eons or generations has been being used, really a prescriptive easement, adverse possession, whatever.
Well, we've, I've looked into that too, it's land courted land, those.
So, there's none of that?
Those things don't apply.
Okay.
I wish I could say they did, because it would make this thing a whole lot simpler.
Uh-huh.
I mean, and, and that's not our area, we're zoning, you know, we don't grant prescriptive easements on this board.
Okay.
Now, if I may, so it's, it's not accessible at all, I'd be walking on Columbia?
You can't?
Eh, I don't know, what do you say?
You can go down Columbia halfway there, but the harbor master came down halfway, and he said, it's not passable, it's a mudhole, on low tide, there's no water at all, it's only like a hundred feet, and we're on that same trail, but there's, if, if them passageways are not owned, we'll settle for that, but there'll be a lot of dinghies and kids and cohog rakes and people, there's an old timer down, eighty years old on the next street, he's came down once a month out back, I help him out, get down to get his oysters, how many he gets, and he said to me, are you kidding, like, it's just not right, if the passageways aren't owned, why can't we use them? There's signs, no trespassing, looks like a spook trail, you can't even get in, like.
But just because he says it, doesn't make it the law.
Right.
Well, he calls the police.
The, the police came down.
I'm talking about the old timer that's going and getting cohogs, instead of you kidding me.
All right.
So, go ahead, sir, you've got the microphone.
Well, I think I'm done. Well, I think I'm done.
Thank you.
If, if we could, if we could agree to have a way to get down to the beachhead and get out to our boats, it's all over, as far as I'm concerned. He's making it difficult on us, we're making it difficult on him, is what it comes down to.
I'm pretty much hearing what I thought I was gonna hear, thank you for your comments.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else wanna get up and speak?
Hey, this is your chair?
Yeah.
Anita.
Yeah, you'll get your chance, somebody's coming up.
Oh, okay, okay.
Michael Carr, 9 Barn Street.
Would you say your name again, Mike?
Michael Carr, C-A-R-R. I think if we had a little clarification on the streets that are marked, that are not his, if they were marked out, we might be able to find our way down to the beach using stuff that we already know is not his.
I hate to tell you this, but as I interpret this, if you wanted that marked, you could certainly hire a surveyor and have them marked, but you can't impose it upon the man that owns the other land to hire a surveyor to suit your needs.
Okay, is that something the town is responsible for?
Nope.
Well, then, how does he know?
The neighbors that are here that are very concerned could all chip in, if they all put in 500 bucks apiece, there'd be more than enough money to hire an, an engineer.
Okay, then if we don't mark the streets...
It might be cheap, I don't know what Attorney Morton gets, but you're gonna pay one way or another.
Okay, good, look at it another way, can we have him mark his land so we know where the streets are?
If I knocked on your door and said, "Go hire an engineer, mark your land, I wanna know where your land is," what would you say to me?
If someone was cutting through it?
No, if I knocked on your front door and said, "I want you to hire an engineer and mark out your lot, I wanna know where your lot is, I'm curious." Would you do it? It's only gonna cost you a few grand.
May I?
No, but...
Okay.
If I'm standing somewhere and he doesn't know where his land is...
Let me finish.
If he doesn't know where I'm standing, whether it's a street or his land...
That hasn't been established.
So that's what we need to do, I think, would clear up a lot of things.
You know, you guys are bringing the suit, so you have the, you guys, he doesn't have to, I think the burden's gonna fall...
You know what it is, Jim, excuse me, we just want the passageways.
Let this man, let this man finish, 'cause Nazzy asked to speak next, and I, and I got your, I don't know if that's your wife sitting beside you or just some pretty lady, but I told her she could be next too.
Thank you.
If Columbia seems to be the right of way to the water, and no one seems to know exactly where that is, can we get clarification from that, since it's an access point?
Well, who, who, clarification from whom?
The town?
You can go to the town and you can look at the public records, I'm just trying to answer your question, and, to the best I can, but this board doesn't have the authority, and I don't think any member of the town has the authority to go and say, "Hey, town, this is how we want you to spend the money for my personal gain."
Okay, I understand.
You, you, you get me?
Right.
And, and I'm just not, and it's not, I'm not saying it's a funny answer, but...
No, I know, I understand, I'm just saying that...
I get it, I know what you're saying.
Would make, make a lot more sense if we all knew what we're talking about and not cutting this way or that way, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir, who's next?
I may.
Go, go ahead, Nazzy, you gotta get in queue, I'm gonna let these two, but you can sit down and be comfortable while we talk. Go ahead, Naz. And then you.
When you apply for a building permit, you do have to stake your property corners by, by law.
That's, that's...
Well, all the corners.
Okay.
So, I mean, the commissioner, right, like, does not like to impose a law or costs on the applicant, but if push comes to shove, the applicant has to stake all his law corners and lines.
Okay.
That's, that's the law.
What was the last, the last person, was his name Bob?
Carr, Mr. Carr, he said.
Mike, whatever.
Mike Carr.
Did you hear that?
I did.
Okay, and, and I'm sure your attorney heard it too.
But again, the most important thing here is the bylaw about the variance.
Yep.
I understand the neighbors upset and everything.
No, no, and I wanna, yeah, that's why we're...
Yeah, concentrate on the variance.
We're gonna, and we're gonna give the person that's trying to build a home an opportunity to speak at some point, but let's, let every... Ma'am, go ahead, you've been very patient. Pardon me?
Anita Padula.
Anita Padula, go ahead, Anita.
Our house is on 11 Barn Street, and the backyard is on Murphy Street. We were never notified even when the land was sold for these people, so we had no idea that this, where our boats are out in the water on Mur, well, down at the end of that lot, I don't know what it's called now, but, that, that was, we always thought that was just conservation. For 20, 25 years, we've paid our mooring dues, our boats are out there, probably seven, eight of us out there. So, nobody said that there was, we didn't even, it wasn't marked off, we just started walking down there like we always did, and all of a sudden this summer...
I get it, I, I can see the caution.
So you know the whole routine, you've heard it over and over, the police come, the harbor master comes, the harbor master marks the dinghies, harbor master tells us to put the dinghies closer to the water, so we do, and we put them in the water, still not good enough, 'cause we have to get out to our boats, and now you're pulling the dinghy and you're trying to... So all this went on, but we're still paying our dues and paying our, you know, paying our harbor master fees, and we're getting, and we can't use them, all went, all summer we, we never used them. We tried to go through the little streets, Cove Street, Handy Street, I tried to walk down there as much as I could, I was told by the, the husband that I trespassed. I said, "But how does he under, how does he know where we're trespassing? I'm marking off as much as I can these side streets to try to figure it out, but they come out and they're gonna call the police because I'm tr-"
I get it.
I'm trespassing.
I get it.
So, we don't know, I mean...
To your comments, when a building permit is pulled, if it's a, if it's what they call a Form A, in other words, it's a by right builder permit.
Mm-hmm.
Nobody gets a, nobody gets a notice.
Okay.
You know, nobody, they don't call up all the neighbors and say, "Hey, guess what? We just issued a builder permit."
Anything.
Doesn't happen.
I get it, you don't have to, okay, but...
But, so, so I understand, you know, how you guys got stunned, and, and I'm, and I'm letting the person that's building the house hear how you guys all got stunned, whether he senses, or he and his wife are sensitive to it or not, I can't speak to that. As far as Columbia Street and Handy Ave and Cove Ave, I think it's being telegraphed pretty adequately that those are public ways, like it or not.
Yes.
So, that could, that may become, you know, a compelling reason for this person to wanna work with you folks a little bit, and it may not, you know, as, as you all have the right to hire an attorney.
Exactly.
You know, and, and the problem is, my concern is that, you know, you go forward with this suit and he gets a cease and desist, and, oh, it does just cost everybody a lot of money, and I don't mind seeing attorneys make money, but I think there's plenty of ways for them to make money without neighbors ending up hating each other, and...
Just for the record though, I just wanna let...
That's just, that's just a, you know...
I understand, just for the record, I wanna let you know, I, I tried to contact them, I tried to contact his wife, I tried to ask her if we could have a...
Yeah, and you're, and you're trying now too.
Yep, and we asked if we could sit down and, and talk. But I was, I was, I was shot down, so it got nasty, I said, "Okay." I went down there with my grandson, I have a six-year-old grandson, I went down with our shellfish rakes and like we do every Saturday, and we go down, and I was literally so humiliated, and in front of my grandson, it was, it was so devastating for him, all I heard after was, "Mimi, is that the bad lady? Mimi, is that the bad lady?" Like, this is, this is crazy what's going through his head, just be, just be civil, I don't know how we're gonna sit down and talk.
Well, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, all right, go ahead, sir, it's Naaman.
Chris, Chris Olivera.
Chris Olivera, go ahead, Chris.
For Irene Corbelling, MS, I'm actually Rick Anita Padula's son-in-law, long time, I've been in the family for 19 years. I just had a quick question, I know everybody's saying about these, these roads are not our prop, they don't own them. It looks like Warren of, of Farring and Cove go, go to the water, so you're saying if we get, if the whole, the whole neighborhood gets together and gets them, gets them surveyed, we can legally use those roads to access the water, correct? Is that what you're...
I'm not the absolute authority on that, but to answer your question, that's the way I believe it.
That's the way you believe it is?
That's right.
So if we all get a surveyed, and, and let's say Farring or Cove runs through the foundation of their home, what do we do from there? They're building a house on, on property that's not technically theirs, correct?
If Farring or Cove did in, in fact, run through the foundation of their home, they'd, they'd have a serious problem, but I'm...
Well, but I'm sa, but...
So let's not, you know, so what if an airplane fell on this building right now and we all died?
No, I understand, we all died, it is, we don't have to worry about this landmark.
What if Zeus rose up from the dead?
No, that's fine, but I'm, what I'm saying...
What if salt got in your pepper shaker?
I understand what you're saying, but I'm saying...
But let's not talk about what if.
No, no, but what I'm saying is if we get this property surveyed, and they do run through it, can we walk through there legally?
Yeah, of course.
Yeah.
Of course, right? So, and let's, let's all get, let's all get together, let's all get this property surveyed, and see where the roads are, then we'll know where we can walk through, whether it's under their house, on the side of their house, over, around their driveway, it's a, it's a right of, a legal right of way that we have if we get in prop, get surveyed, correct?
Then you have an attorney that's representing you all as a group, and you should be asking her that question.
No, no, absolutely, I'm just bringing in front of you and in front of the property owner.
It's being heard, it's being heard.
It's being heard, that's all I'm, that's all I was trying to get, and well, if that's what we have to do, that's, that's what we'll, that's what our plan would be if we can't come to an, an actual agreement, which clearly, we've tried this and it didn't work, so, but that's pretty much all I had to say.
I got you. Thank you, thank you for your comments, good job.
Huh? Wait a minute.
Olivera.
Olivera. I know, but when I looked at it years back, the ownership actually went out into the water. Okay, okay. Yep. The town owns the beach? Okay.
Just, just for the record, we're just, we're just discussing who owns the beachfront.
So, these are the points I believe.
And, and see, what's being said, what the testimony that's being given is the harbor master's come and told them that if they walk through here, they're walking through a marshland, and it's, that's where they have, so I, I don't know if the harbor master's asking them not to walk through the marshland, or to buy deeper boots or longer boots, I don't know what he's, why he cares if they're walking through muds, but they have this way that they could go to.
Yeah, okay.
They have this way that they could go to, so, okay, thank you. Anybody else in, that's, go ahead, come on up, sir.
My name is Rob Barrera, I live at 8 Albion Place in Somerville, Mass. We have property on Barn Street, 5 Barnes, and a few years ago, we were approached by another family behind us to sell the sliver of land on this side of Murphy. At the time, we all assumed that the other side of Murphy was, you know, conservation land, marshland. So I guess, I'm not gonna reiterate what everybody else has said, but we were under the impression that that land was pretty much either owned by the town, conservation...
I think your point is that nobody intentionally trespassed.
Correct, and, you know, one of the things that we have, what had done, is actually, we went through Google Maps and took a look at the satellite dish, and you can actually see the path for the course of the last 30, I think close to 40 years, if you look at it in the satellite map, you can actually see the trail leading to the water. I don't think that we're gonna resolve anything here, but my request is that, you know, like, what, what is the path forward? We're here, I personally don't agree that a two-family is, fits with the aesthetics of the town, or the location of where we are as a family here, I personally, like, these people are my second family, and my kids are growing up here, right? But, what's the path forward? Like, i- if it's money to, you know, create easements, that's great, but I think what we're looking for, there are a lot of folks that use that path and will continue to use that path, like, we're looking for the easiest way to resolve this issue. If it's to continue to use the paper roads, I'm completely fine with parking my four cars on those roads and walking down to the water, it's only gonna make other folks' lives more difficult, that's really all I got.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else? I think we were all people, we were, we were inviting anybody that was, we'll call it the, the neighbors versus the homeowner. Anybody here that's on the homeowner's side of this, that wants to speak? Anybody else here that wants to speak, period? And I'm gonna say this only once, once this board makes a motion to close the public portion of this hearing, nobody will be allowed to speak. Yes, sir, do you wanna speak?
So my name is John Zamboulis, I am, so 71 Anderson in Braintree, Massachusetts. These are my parents that are building this house here, no one has, wants to have fights with neighbors at all, right? I think they were surprised, but my parents were surprised as well. You, you work, you save, you dream to build something there, and then you try to approach people to let them know, you know, and it wasn't always screaming, right? I mean, people have had conversations, right? It wasn't always yelling, but you wanna let someone know that the land was purchased and, you know, I have a, I have a 12-year-old, a two-year-old, I have a two-week-old newborn at home, and so I'm...
Hey, congratulations on that.
So I'm exhausted to be here nonetheless, but it was important to be here, right? And I have nieces and nephews that will be coming to this house. It is not for a business, it is a two-family in name only, a duplex, but from the outside, aesthetically, it's a nice house, it looks like a single-family house, but it's just for our families to come in and be there, right? No one wanted arguments and fights, and the shock was on both sides. You guys were shocked, right? My parents were shocked.
Sir, I've had to tell other people, you gotta, you gotta address the board.
I just, yeah, you know, and, and sorry about that, yeah.
That's okay.
I felt it was important, right? It is not, and to be here because of this is, I wish there was another route, is, is there a way to have it where it doesn't go across the entire marsh? Is there a way that they can have their dinghy somewhere? I don't know, but these are not, this is not worth it to be here for this, for everybody to waste their time and their energy and their money for this, you know? And this is, and this is a nice house, and no one would have had any trouble with this house, right? If it wasn't because of this, the, not being able to keep the boats on the property, but if you own this property yourself, and you wanna bring your grandkids on there, it's hard to be okay with people walking their dogs through there, because you're gonna be worried, are they off their leash, are they gonna get bitten? Because you own that land, and you worked hard for it, so, I get it, but I guess this is what I wanted to say, it isn't like we're awful people, we are not at all. Same house we lived at for 40 years, you get to know your neighbors, we have friends here too, on Swift Beach, right? I guess that's all I wanna say, really.
Thank, thank you for coming up.
I, I thought it was important, right?
I, I think everybody's point of view is important.
Right.
Thank you.
Just so everybody knows, all right.
You've, you've had a lot of opportunities, I'm gonna give you another one.
One more, Jim, makes it sound like if my wife walked down the passageway, which they don't own, and he said they're gonna have her arrested, so when we leave here tonight, let's, at least can we say, "The passageways aren't owned, and we can scope them out, have them surveyed, and we use the passageways, we'll deal with it."
We're, we're trying to give you information here tonight that you guys, both sides of this argument...
Yeah.
...can find useful. We're not a police authority.
Right.
You know, we're, we can't, I could tell you, yeah, you can walk here and there You know, we're, we can't, I could tell you, yeah, you can walk here and there and the other place, but that doesn't make it right.
No, but if they don't own it, it's public.
I can tell you, I can tell you information that's going to be helpful to you.
Yeah.
But it's, the burden is still going back to you folks, you know, we can't grant you permission. There is private property here, you know, and I'm sensitive to both sides of this issue.
Yeah.
I, I, I personally had a family member that owned a home, a home on the Cape Cod Canal, and people would come and, and park their car in his lawn, and ruin his lawn, and walk across his lawn, and pick up his fishing pole, and use it to try to catch a striped bass in his yard. And the public is ruthless. The American public does not give a shit about anybody but themselves, in plain English.
Right, but that's.
I get that, and I get where this man and his wife are coming from. I can get how upsetting it is to spend money and buy a piece of land and have the whole world think they've got the right because they want to get to the water to walk across your land. That's not, that's not right. So I understand both sides of this argument very well.
Yeah.
Very well. So.
But we could have left her well enough alone, instead of all the passageways around this house, a path from the back.
I understand, I understand that, and, and the pa, the cost to eliminate these roads could become quite a burden for this person, and, and maybe the conversations tonight may impact, may not, you know? You know, you might have a landowner here that's got pockets so deep, he says, I don't care, now they've irritated me, and I don't care if I have to spend $10 million, they're not going to get their dinghy down on the beach. Or you might have a guy here that's saying, hmm, I don't really want to part with $10 million, maybe those dinghies aren't so bad. I don't know that, and I can't make that, you know? I can, all I can do is try to get everybody listening to each other and hearing both sides of it. I told you early on that I'm not going to recommend that this board make a decision tonight.
Yeah.
Going to give the parties a chance to have a cooling off period and maybe a conversation period. I'd be more than delighted if in two weeks we came back and this application was withdrawn. I'd be very, very happy, personally, but.
Can I speak again?
You can.
Okay.
You have to say your name again, so that the record knows who's speaking again.
Stuart Weeks.
Thanks, Stuart.
Alright, now, did I understand when he spoke, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce your name.
Mr. Eclasi.
That is the responsibility of the building person to survey the land?
That could be enforced.
Okay, so we don't have to survey the land, he has to survey the land.
Who, who's he?
The builder.
Well.
This guy.
You could go to the building commissioner and state that through your, I would suggest through your attorney, you could make that argument to the commissioner. We can't, we can't.
No, I, I know that you can't, I'm just saying that if he's building a house and he bought a property, it's his responsibility to have it surveyed.
Choose that course of action. You might be able to follow up on what the chair, with, uh, Chair, with his background in construction.
Okay, what exactly did he say?
He said that when, that the, when.
I, I, I repeat what I said, when you pull a building permit, you should mark your property corners.
You have to?
You have to mark your property corners, put a, put a number on a tree or on a piece of wood, put a DEP number, number of the house, and mark your corners.
And all the.
All your corners.
All the corners.
Correct.
Okay, so that's his responsibility.
Right, and if I, if, if I may, if I may.
Go ahead, sir.
I through the, also the applic, the owner through you, variance is a tough route to go. Like Mr. Acting Chair said, I strongly recommend for both parties to solve this issue, because winning a variance in court is not fun, and I don't think there's any ground for it. Now, he got a building permit for a duplex, I don't know how he got it, well, good for him, but that's a strong, strong hardship if he has to come for a variance. So I recommend, so I recommend to the owner and to you, to the counselor, not to the neighbors, let the counselor speak with the owner alone, so there's no dispute commotion, counselor and the owner alone try to make a decision. If they, if apparently they don't want to agree, and you pursue with your, with your claim, and again, I recommend for the owner to be very careful how to approach it. It's not fun to win a variance in court if you get appealed. That being said, if anyone else want to speak, Jim or?
I just have another question.
Finish your comments.
Alright, we're not allowed to talk to him.
No.
Will you ask him?
You can ask questions through the, through the board.
Will you ask him if he's willing to get together and make a reasonable solution to this problem?
We'll get to that.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, sir, thank you for your time. Anybody else that wants to come up here and, and, because this is all being recorded and it's going to be on WBZ TV? It's, um. They, they used to have a show called Laugh-In, and now they have, they have the Wayham Zoning Board of Appeals. Yep, yep, exactly.
My name is Donna Sullivan, 1 Barnes Street, and I guess I'm the oldest person in the place, but I've had a place on the corner of Barnes and Trinity, Columbia, wherever it's down here.
You want, you need to get closer to the mic, sir.
I'm sorry.
You can drag, you can drag it closer to you.
It's probably easier than that.
You can bend it down. Try to hurt it, go ahead.
Okay. Okay, the thing is that I've heard all of this talk, as I understand it, that the street, Columbia runs all the way down to the water, is that correct?
That's what it looks like on what I'm looking at.
And it's always been public access?
That's what I believe to be correct.
Well, we're talking about one short piece of land from the edge of Columbia Street back into the conservation area, I think.
Well, no, let, let me just interrupt you for a minute.
Yeah.
Let me, let me pick this up, how are your eyes, I know you're the oldest guy in the room, but can you see the yellow here?
Yeah, but that's alright.
Alright, can you see on that map, number, what, number 68? At the end of Columbia, right on the waterfront? Okay? Lot 68 is privately owned, that's not conservation land. Do you see across the water, lot number seven, to the other side of Columbia Street? Lot number seven is privately owned, that's not conservation land. None of this land on either side.
Well, the road itself and everything on the other side of that.
Both sides of Columbia Street are privately owned land, they're not publicly owned conservation land.
But it's not owned by the, the building, as I.
Pardon me?
That land is not owned by the folks who are building the property.
As a matter of fact, it is.
Oh, it is? So I stand corrected, but it seems to me, the simple.
One, one minute, sir.
I get it.
Go ahead, sir.
No, all I'm going to say is that a simple agreement, that Columbia can be used without it being, you know, between the folks who own the land and us, to allow us to use Columbia for use of the dinghies or other people getting to the.
I'll take it a step further, if you will, and this is just my personal input. If I was one of the people in the neighborhood and I was approaching this gentleman, who we haven't heard a word from yet. I'd say, let's make a deal, sir.
There's room for you to make a deal.
We're finding out that we have a right to use all these streets that run through all your land. Let's agree not to use Warren Avenue and South Street and Miss and Ferring and Handy and Cove and this, and if you just make this one access for us.
Perfect.
I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, if I, if I were you, this might be an approach that I might take. I'm not telling you what to do, I'm just telling you that's an option that you might, might consider as a group.
It might be reasonable for both sides.
It might, if the guy that owns all this land, and he's sitting right over there, I call him the guy, but I'm sorry, sir, you know.
Just call me Mikey.
Mikey, okay. If, if, you know, it's up, you know, it's up, it's between him and you guys, we hope, but, you know, if this board has to make a decision, it's going to be miserable for both sides, and I'm not saying, it's not, I don't mean that as a threat, I just know this process gets cumbersome.
Well, it doesn't have to happen.
Pardon me?
It doesn't have to get complicated.
We hope not. Thank you for your comments. Who's next? Somebody else must want to speak, come on, this has been too easy.
It's a comfortable chair.
Okay.
If I may, there may be people on Zoom.
Are there anybody on Zoom? Nobody's raised their hand, there's people watching on Zoom, you know, could the people on Zoom at least put an applause or something to let us know that you're awake? You don't have.
They would put their hands up, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, you have a hand, okay.
We have a hand up? So go ahead, let's let Zoom do the, zoom in. Sometimes it takes a minute, is it going to appear on the screen up here?
They're, they're on and their mic is unmuted.
Pardon me?
They're, they're on here and their mic is unmuted.
They're on and their mic is unmuted. Go ahead, sir, you're, you've been offered the, sir, ma'am, you've been offered the opportunity to speak.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
No, I'm sorry to interrupt, I thought you just wanted someone to raise their hand to get a good laugh.
Okay. The whole room is laughing, attaboy, thanks. Okay, so we've heard from everybody else, and before we go too much deeper into this, Mike, would you like to speak now? You've heard the neighbors. Go ahead, let's hear your side of this whole dilemma.
First of all, I have to defend my wife's reputation, because there's been some scarless accusations made about her behavior, and if anybody who knew my wife could testify, we didn't bring anybody as a character reference here tonight, but she doesn't act that way. I know that she has had conversations with different people explaining from the time, the summer we bought the property in 2020 up until this summer, that we weren't going to allow people to trespass on the property once we started to build the house. So I don't know if that got under, the bee under some people's bonnet, but apparently it did. And the, the thing that keeps popping up in my mind beside, did anybody read my rebuttal to the lawyers' assertions in the letters that were attached?
Were you reading it earlier?
I looked at it, it's pretty extensive, I read several pages, but then I didn't finish.
Well, there's, there's actually a narrative in there that explains what, how they're getting to the beach, and I have no problem whatsoever, I'd read it myself, but I had an ophthalmologist's appointment.
Would you like it read into the record right now, sir?
Absolutely.
Then we'll do that. That'll be, if you just want to sit back for a minute.
Go.
Is this it?
Yeah, why don't you read the narratives? Which, which page of the narratives, Mike?
Do you want the whole thing, from beginning to end?
If you want.
I think that he's entitled to have his, it's only 30 pages long, folks, get comfortable.
I'm not an attorney and I don't play one.
He's not an attorney, otherwise it would be 100 pages long. No, no present company excluded.
Yeah, if it's going to be read in the record, I'd love to just be able to speak after.
Absolutely.
Regarding some of the assertions of the stuff.
You can speak, just not, just not during.
Absolutely.
And you don't, I know, you're very, okay. So this is dated November 21st, with a heading from 155 Candy Lane in Brockton, it's addressed to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and it says, Dear ZBA members, now that you blah blah, mentions us all. November 7, 2022, I received a letter via certified mail, a formal notification from the Wayham ZBA stating that Richard and Anita Padula, Care of Attorney Jillian Morton, are seeking an immediate cease and desist at the property located at 9 Murphy Street, Wayham, Mass. Says this map 50B, lot 1 slash 3 in the R30 zoning district, and that the ZBA will hold a public hearing on November 30, 2022, 6:30 PM, and read 320 of the Wayham Zer Vicenna. Following is my rebuttal to the appeal of my building permit. My wife and me brought our lot 50B, lot 1 through 3 at 9 Murphy Street on August 7, 2020, which encompasses 3.2 acres, including several paper streets, which are unconstructed and were taxed on, and we are taxed on 2.78 acres. On one single tax bill, and request the issuance of a variance for lot size to acquire the right to build this proposed duplex if you don't agree that we have the need 45,000 square, square feet as currently required, have the needed. Well before submitting my building permit application, I reached out to the former building commissioner, expressing exactly what my intentions were. Please see the attached email and his reply, my building permit application said I would like to build a 3,248 square foot, two-level duplex on reinforced concrete piers, 2.1 feet above 18 feet base flood elevation, in a VE flood zone on lot 50B 1-3 at 9 Murphy Street, 3.2 acres with 210-foot frontage on Murphy Street. I answered no to the questions about having prior ZBA and planning board review. Apparently, Mr. Aquina's professional opinion and by his due diligence at the time, he determined that neither review was required, and that our lot meets all other zoning requirements for a duplex in an R30 zone without implications of the paper roads. The prior building commissioner and all other town departments that had review as part of the online application process approved my building permit application. I was also advised, when George Stewart, the building inspector, brought it up with zoning official at that time, that official informed him that our lot was grandfathered in. This last development does not come as a complete surprise to me, as I was advised by a former attorney who practices in Wayham a few months ago, that some individuals were in the process of having a lawyer, process of a lawyer shopping, and were seeking representation for action against my wife and me for issues regarding access to Mark's Cove and removal of boats from our salt marsh. By presenting this appeal to the Wayham ZBA shows that this case fell through the cracks of the town bureaucracy due to a lack of communications with each other or a failure for these boards and commissions as being a required sign-off in the approvals process of the online building permit applications on the Wayham Viewpoint cloud system, thus creating this disturbing hardship at the last minute, some eight months into the process. This, however, is not the reason that this application for a public hearing for a variance special permit is before you right now. This zoning issue controversy has everything to do, there's no word with, retaliation by the Padulas and other like-minded residents of Swift Beach, whom they have whipped up into a frenzy and who are supporting this action by coordination, penning these dishonest letters and supporting their narrative. Seemingly, they all feel terribly aggrieved that we, after purchasing this property in good faith and paying our taxes, had the nerve to post no trespassing signs on it at the recommendation of the Director of Natural Resources, Harbor Master Gary Buckminster, and the Police Department. The harbor master, in the performance of his duties, tagged all the boats, skips and dinghies that he could identify ownership of, that were illegally chained and locked to steel stakes with concrete bases into our salt marsh, which is land court-registered land located above the mean high-water mark. Most of the violators immediately moved their watercraft from our salt marsh, and a few staked them down closer to the water below the mean high-water mark, including the Padulas, who also sought special permission from my wife to keep their boat where it was. My wife told her that would not be consistent, now equal treatment, and would be unfair to the other boat owners, and told her no. Then Mrs. Padula asked for more time to comply and move their boat, and eventually moved it below the mean high-water mark, meanwhile, also stating that they always access the waterfront to Mark's Cove, Cove by using the paper streets. Likewise, this claim strains credulity, as we have personally witnessed the opposite. The harbor master was very professional dealing with the whole situation, and advised us that we should call the Wayham Police Department immediately if we observed people continuing to ignore the no trespassing signs, who we only called once after it was posted. The harbor master largely agreed with our assessment of the situation, meaning that all the people claiming to be using the paper street portion of Columbia were not. They in fact were veering off Columbia, they in fact were veering off Columbia Paper Street, where it intersects Ferring Avenue, Paper Street, then onto our, onto our lots 13, 12, and 7, and 8, to reach the mean high-water mark adjacent to Mark's Cove. In Attorney Morton's Exhibit 5, she attached seven letters from the so-called aggrieved abudders. she attached seven letters from the so-called aggrieved abudders who made several spurious and well-coordinated claims, including that we were preventing them from traveling down the paper street section of Columbia. This claim is facile and proverbially, proverbially false. I'm sorry. I'm stuttering. Even if I stipulated that this is legally accepted public way, the aerial imagery available from multiple different sources of our salt marsh clearly shows the path and the scouring that has occurred from hauling their four-wheel beach carts across the salt marsh loaded with supplies for a day on their boats. That shows they are not using Columbia. The fact is, they stayed on the Columbia Paper Street. The fact is, if they stayed on the Columbia Paper Street, they would end up in a totally different location, the creek behind the low-tide sandbar, and in muck up to their ankles and knees. The other claims, as most of these letters are facile as well, I have had little or no face-to-face interaction or contact with any of these folks, and I have not had much of any with these aggrieved abudders who do not seem to appear on Exhibit 4, Certified Abudders List, except for Mrs. Anita Padula, a short conversation which was not initiated by nor terminated by myself. In fact, it was Mrs. Anita Padula who first tried to contact me through phone, text, and email, which I ignored because she just identified herself as one of my neighbors in Swift Beach. Subsequently, she found a way to contact my wife. Also, the claims that our beautifully designed duplex, which was intentionally designed to look just like a single-family home on reinforced concrete piers, as required by code, is somehow detrimental to the neighborhood, is also a red herring and is totally unfounded because I have not shared our architectural, our engineering plans publicly and therefore claiming its magnitude is detrimental to the neighborhood is also very misleading as the three buildable lots in our subdivision will be very similar in size, footprint, and height, regardless if they are a single family or a duplex. Attorney Morton is now making this case in opposition to our duplex on a group of our lots comprising 32,235 square feet, surrounded by paper streets that we own the lots on both sides of and to the center line of for all practical purposes, while giving short shrift to our other fully taxed 89,765 square feet comprised of woods, wetlands, and salt marsh. This is in stark contrast to 7 Murphy Street, where this attorney argued vigorously and with great determination in favor of a variance before your board December 8, 2021, and again in January 12, 2022, public hearing 64-21 for Scott Green variance, 17 Murphy Street, map 50B, lot 141, lot 1-41, to build a 47-foot, single-family, two-story home on concrete reinforced piers on a vacant, unbuildable 20,500-square-foot parcel surrounded by paper streets, including Range Avenue Paper Street between the lot and Swift Beach. Even though it was lacking 31.7% or 9,500 square feet of lot size to meet current zoning requirements in the R30 zoning district, Attorney Morton sung its praises as a most desirable, beautifully designed, and as a welcome addition fitting into the Swift Beach community. At these same two hearings, there was a lot of discussion during this appeal regarding rights of way, private property, rights on land court-registered land, viewing rights easements, trespassing, and inappropriate dinghy placement in the area. Now, 10 months later, Attorney Morton seemed to have developed a case of selective memory as she now is arguing vigorously that the public good and their abudders' rights will be aggrieved if a build of this magnitude is allowed to move forward and that somehow these folks have some claim over our property in regards to crossing over it to Mark's Cove and/or storing of their boats on it. She now comes.
Point of order, please.
Go ahead.
Any remarks about the attorney can be read into the records. We're not establishing character for the attorney here.
Okay.
So you gotta erase anything.
I'll try to, I'll try to skip anything.
Anything that has to do about the attorney, you can't bring it up.
If I look forward, I don't think I see her name anymore, but this goes on for several more pages. Where'd I leave off? She now comes before you in an amazing gesture.
Well, I guess.
She now comes to, in the face of serious opposition from Karma Conservation Agent and David Bissett, consigned by the DP, she is arguing from both of the coin by seeking a disapproval. Including its remoteness. We are in no way interested in building this duplex as an investment property. We are not, as alleged greedy developers, nor are we interested in violating anyone's legal ability to enjoy using the waterfront of Mark's Cove. We only insist that they do it properly, legally, and within the bounds of proprietary and good taste. If using these paper roads, streets, and avenues laid out on this 1939 land court-registered land-accepted subdivision, 12124F, our legal rights of way, then they are more than welcome to travel them as they may, but without violating the provisions of Massachusetts Wetland Protection Act or the Wayham Wetland bylaws as they struggle to trudge through the mucky salt marsh where Columbia Paper Street lies. Are the briar bushes, burrs, thickets, and densely wooded areas of short Veering, Handy, and Cove paper streets with their fully-loaded beach carts in tow. This is not the path they seek, nor is it the path they claim to have been using all along. They are really upset that we are somehow allowed to purchase this land in the first place, preventing their convenient, longtime-existing pathway to the waterfront and stopping their unchecked scouring of our salt marsh. After watching all the town boards and commissions' hearings on WCTV's YouTube channel for the last few years, I have observed that the ZBA usually is in the business of providing relief from zoning restrictions by an applicant who owns the land or project involved and granting said but relief by means of issuing variances and special permits. Now, it is apparently going to be used to have an ethically-obtained building permit that was issued by the previous building commissioner and zoning enforcement officer and subsequently extended by the current building commissioner and zoning enforcement officer, stopped from continuing forward. Based on my observations of your board's decisions over the last few years, this seems to be largely unprecedented, in my humble opinion, especially after watching the same attorney, blah blah blah, family. Okay, we're not gonna, down the board. To be allowed to build a family duplex and lot is. Additionally, I'm skipping up the notification of this appeal before the ZBA at this late date, under these convoluted circumstances, to seek a cease and desist order of our intended duplex project, although not surprising, is extremely distressing and demoralizing for my family and me by creating this hardship after spending countless hours to properly bring this dream of a family duplex in a remote and pristine location to fruition. My experience, after watching hundreds of hours of testimony before your board, informs my opinion that although you must operate within certain guidelines within the zoning bylaws by making decisions on variances and special permits, you seem to also exercise a wide latitude based on whether you may be reversed on appeal or based on the emotional aspects of the applicant in the moment. I'm not asking for special treatment before your board, just equal treatment. In a fair and impartial determination based on these unusual conditions presented by this subdivision plan conceived 12 years before the first zoning bylaws were adopted in Wayham and registered containing over a dozen undeded, unconstructed paper streets, most of which, due to their locations, will never be constructed nor be used for roadway purposes. If, from the beginning of this process, had anyone in the town of Wayham government had advised us that we needed to secure prior Zoning Board of Appeals relief before proceeding forward, we would have and not spent, we would have and not spent thousands of dollars for a new site plan, architectural plan, engineering plans, building permit application, amended superseding order of conditions, and subsequent extension of the A S O C until April 18, 2025. Most assuredly, we would not have moved forward before securing it first, only to be possibly denied later. Hopefully, none of these other extraneous issues surrounding this appeal brought to the forefront by Attorney Morton in this case, which are not germane to the Zoning Board of Appeal issue, should be considered as you make your decision. Our section of this subdivision was on the market for three months before we purchased it. If all these folks were so concerned how the land might be used in the future, they had an equal opportunity to purchase it for themselves. Whether you are allowed to build our proposed duplex or build a single-family home, these folks will still have the same extraneous issues with us to complain about. However, they should seek another platform or forum to resolve them. Respectfully submitted, Michael Mazzullo, blah blah blah. There's a blank page here. Thank goodness. I am done. We've read it, sir.
Do you have the part that I, with the building, prior building commissioner, the email and his reply?
I don't have that in what was handed to me, but.
Where is the email, Mike?
I might have it here.
It was an attachment.
I might have it in the stuff that I printed out.
It's right here.
All right, I got a.
Looks like this.
This one. I got it. I have, I have them in there in the record. And I have, I have your thing here in this record. This is all in the record.
Okay.
This is all in the record. So, is there anything, any comments you'd like to make now that I've read it? Or, I've got a couple, but I think you should have the four first.
So the first thing that comes to mind is whether we're allowed to build a duplex, which seems to be the issue, or is it? Or a single-family home on the same footprint, because that's where it will be. It will be 35 feet tall. It will be on the same footprint, whether it's a single family or duplex. But the duplex would never be used for rental purposes. It's a family duplex. It's going to be the legacy that I leave behind for my grandkids and my kids. So regardless of what I'm allowed to build, the same issues are going to exist as far as traversing the marsh to the waterfront. Now, they're all claiming that they use Columbia Street, which, as you read in my transcript, it goes right into the creek aside of our lots. And they cannot tow their four-wheel carts through there to access Mark's Cove. On our deed for our property, there's an appurtenant easement that runs with the land that states that the proper right-of-way to the Wankanko River at the time, now the Wayham River, is using Murphy Street, crossing over Wankanko down to Swift Beach next to 7 Murphy Street to the beach. And to use the land below the mean high-water mark to traverse the outer edge of all that property to get to the Mark's Cove area by the creek and the sandbar that appears at low tide. That is the inconvenient legal right-of-way to get to their moorings in Mark's Cove.
It's, it's, it's one of them.
Right. So they can stay on, I would prefer if the town were to construct some kind of a boat launch at the end of Columbia.
I'd like it if the town came and paved my driveway.
Right. They're not going to do that.
No.
And it's, they're not going to do it because it's DEP-protected wetland. And what they're doing by dragging their fully-loaded beach carts across the wetland, and you can see from the Google images, which is on this right here, that they're scouring the marsh in order to get to Mark's Cove.
I understand your argument, sir, and I think your argument is that Columbia Street is probably not the best access to the.
And somebody kept referring to this path behind where our house lot is. That is our property.
Absolutely. I can see that. I've got, I've got.
Cove is not.
This that I'm looking at.
Cove, Cove Street is all woods, briars, and thickets. They could not cross there. They could get probably to Warren, but they could never do it with a beach cart with the day supplies for the beach on their boat and an outboard motor to get the dinghy out to their moored boat. So what I'm trying to say is, their argument that they're using the paper streets as an access to the beach is farcical. That's not what they've been doing. The scouring on the marsh proves it. And it should have nothing to do whether we're eligible to have a variance to build a duplex. If we can't get a variance to build a duplex, we'll settle for building a single-family house, but the same issues will remain.
I hear you. And, and if I understand everything that I've heard tonight and before tonight, if, if the, the build of permit for two-family has been issued, and has not been revoked, no cease and desist has been imposed, and you're continuing, I would assume, to build whatever you've been given permission to build. But I also, in leading, in reading, I tried to listen to what I was reading, even though sometimes I messed up a couple of words because I was trying to think about, I was trying to think about what I just read and read at the same time. And, you know, good thing I didn't have gum to chew.
ABC.
So, so as I was reading your document, in it you put that you recognize that those paper streets exist and that they would have the right to traverse them, but that if that's the route they choose to go, they should be sure that they're on those paper streets.
And that's why I'm having it surveyed currently.
So you're having it surveyed even though we couldn't, we couldn't impose that on you, but you're doing it yourself because you want to, you want to know where they are as well?
Exactly.
Okay. I'm pretty sure you're not building your house in the middle of an existing or a paper road.
No.
I'm pretty sure that any engineer that designed your.
GAF.
Yeah. And I, GAF, this isn't their first plan that they've ever drawn either. So I'm comfortable with all that. Let me ask you a question. If that survey gets completed, would you be willing to share it with the neighborhood?
Absolutely.
And, and if we continued this this evening, I've heard that you are willing for the neighbors to pass and repass on the areas that we all kind of agree they have the right to pass and repass. the right to pass and repass.
Absolutely.
I've heard the neighbors say that they're willing to pass and repass where they're supposed to and not on your private property. But you guys kind of need to convince each other that that's what's going to happen. If we continued this, how long is it going to be before, is it G A F. that's drawing it up for you?
Yes.
They're going to stake it all out?
Yes, they've already done some of it, but they have a lot of building.
They've got a lot of work on, on the, on the.
And it's, it takes priority over land survey.
And what are you having put? Are you having wooden, wooden sticks put? Are you having concrete bounds? What are you having done?
No, they're putting in steel bounds in the ground with a, with a big cap.
They look like rebar's with a plastic cap.
No, these have a, these have a steel cap on the top.
Steel cap on them, okay.
And they're also putting stakes with ribbon on them, on all the corners, yes.
Oh, so both? You're having the steel and the wood, but you're not doing any concrete bounds at this point?
No.
Those are usually $400 or $500 a point.
And they'd be underwater anyway, some of them.
So, the board's been very tolerant of everybody tonight. I'm, at this point, looking to the applicant, I'm looking at you, I'm looking out in the room, and I'm saying that I believe that it's appropriate for us to continue and not to continue for two weeks. I think it would be, I don't know if, I don't know what the word is, but, you know, when you pour salt on a wound.
Adding insult to injury.
Go ahead, Nas, what's your thought?
Let me suggest something. I suggest we continue. It's no secret.
That's where I'm going.
All right, no secret, I, I didn't personally sell this land at trust that I have share and sold this trust, this land. I still own lot 1, 2, 19, and 20, if you all know. I like Mike, I like all the neighbors. Is it possible? I'm willing to give these lots for free. If I give them to you and you give this fine neighbors, because I love Swiss Beach area, I've been here for four years, I'm, I'm willing to deed it for you for free if you deed for them wherever lots they walk in, even swap, won't cost you nothing, I'll give the land away. If that's possible, discuss it with the attorney, she's drafted deed, I'll, I'll have my trustee sign it for you if that works, but it seems to be they're all nice neighbors, I've known all Swiss Beach neighborhood, they're all nice people and you should get along. He is the one for sure, a beautiful house. And again, I assure you, a variance is a tough road to go. Maybe you could make a deal, we come back next time, she withdraws our prejudice, she'll have a deed in her hand, you agreed, you and the attorney and the people, I'll sign the deed for you, you could have the four lots, you give them, you give them the four lots for them, I don't want them. I mean, they're useless anyway. So, and if they don't want them, I could keep them, my name, that's fine, it's only like 30 bucks taxes a year.
Do you know the four lots?
If they want them, they could have them.
Yes, I, I originally wanted to buy them, but he had mentioned that the fire department wanted them for.
Originally, they wanted them, then they, it needs a town meeting to accept them, it's a long process. I went to the fire department, they wanted them to have a wider road at the end in case of fire. I approached the planner, approached the administrator, it's so much preparation, it probably costs $40,000 to give it to the town, and it needs to town meeting if they accept it. So if that would solve the problem, I'm willing to give it away, and maybe you guys could live in harmony, because it's a really nice neighborhood to everybody. See if you could talk it outside, we'll continue with, with your permission, Mr. Chair. We'll continue and discuss it outside, and we go from there.
Would you like to table this for a few minutes and talk outside with?
Well, it's got to be, let them, let them go outside.
That's what I'm saying.
Let's continue.
The attorney, oh, you want to continue it and?
We continue, let them talk out.
Not anymore tonight?
No decision tonight.
Why not? No, I don't, I'm not saying we need.
We need deeds signed.
But why, why continue it until we know whether we're continuing it for two weeks or two months? I want to give them a chance to talk. We can hear somebody else and they can come back.
All right, very well.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Who would I be, who would the lots be deeded to?
To you.
No, I mean the other lots.
We'll decide if they want.
Am I just giving them access over certain lots?
Right, so it looks like you will take lot 1, 2, and 20, you will give 13, 12, and 7.
Has he given up? Has he given up ownership?
You give lot to lot, ownership.
Just putting an easement across it.
No, lot to lot, we're going to give you.
So who's going to own those?
Who's going to own those?
That's his.
You can, you could deed them to them for a dollar, if they don't want to take possession of them, I'll take possession. I mean, they're useless anyway, and, and originally, I take them, I took them to give them to the town, but it's a lo, long process. So I'm just paying taxes on them, which is minimal, 30 bucks a year, I'm sure they don't mind, or you could keep it in my name, that's fine.
Could they, could they stay in this man's name with an easement across them?
No, lot to lot, we're not doing.
Lot to lot, okay. Well, you, you're giving up four, he's only giving up three.
I'm going to, I got to keep 19 because they crossed through 19 to get to the water. This is their path.
Okay. Okay, I see what you're doing. You're giving up 1, 2, and 20.
We'll give 1, 2, and 20.
You're offering, yeah.
I'll have my trustee sign you a deed, 1, 2, and 20, you sign the deed for 13, 12, and 7 to Mr. Padula. You could give the deed to him.
Or you guys could.
For a dollar.
You could create an entity.
You have to pay the lawyer for the deed, how's that?
That's good.
So why don't we table this, go outside, talk about it, only the lawyers, neighbors don't talk because it goes to chaos, just the attorney and you, Mr. Mazulo, see if that works for you and come back in here, let us continue our.
Do you have, do you have the confidence of your clients to go do that?
Yeah, I am the next hearing, so if we can just push me to the end and.
I'll push you.
We'll just skip over, would you?
Just push me to the end.
We'll just skip right over you like you weren't even here today.
Very well.
Sounds good.
All right, we'll move forward to.
Go have a nice conversation.
All right, we'll move forward to 40-22, Koschal Bald, a variance on 47 Sandwich Road, Matt, 15 lot, 1,014.
Can I make a motion so I could just take a break for a second?
Yes, so moved.
We're going to take five-minute break, please. You guys, they leave, we settle down.
We'll go sit with the. Oh my God, my hip.
Folks, no conversation in this room, in the hall. This room's still going to do business. We're on a microphone here.
Sir, what time does the hearing close?
What time, what's that?
Your hearing's closed.
What time the hearings close? 10 o'clock.
How was?
We'll squeeze you in.
I was planning Gordon Towner Sandwich, we had a.
We're not hearing you yet, but. So folks, don't forget, the attorney and the person building the house are supposed to be talking in private. If you guys are going to go all out in the corridor, they're going to have to go downstairs or something.
You want us to stay here?
You can do whatever, you can, you can stay here, but you got to be quiet.
We'll go somewhere else.
You can go somewhere else, yeah, you don't have to go home, but you can't stay here. We just don't need a lot of noise in the back of the room. Even, even though we're on a short recess, it's still, the microphones are on, there's people on Zoom, it's, it's just not courteous.
Hey, that screen makes me look fat.
Say it again?
That screen make me, makes me look fat. Can we narrow the screen down?
The, the, the screen.
The screen makes me look fat, makes me look wide next to him.
Oh, the screen makes you look fat?
Yeah.
You know, what you can do is you can turn one set of lights on that side of the room off, and then it makes, it makes you look tall.
Or stop eating, you do that too.
I've tried that. I've tried that, you know, I, I was sitting home, eating a four-pound bag of Skittles, drinking my Diet Coke, and I, and I can't understand why, you know, I drank three Diet Cokes and I still didn't lose any weight.
Go figure.
It was the Skittles.
It must have been, because I don't put a cherry on my Sundays.
Nothing.
I give it to the kid.
Yeah.
It just doesn't work.
Three candy bars, but none of them are king-size.
47 Sandwich Road, oh, this is the old Dr. Brown's location. That's, that's Dr. Brown's old office, right, 47? I suppose I should pull it out because I got to read it in. Thank you, thank you, Rick. Richard.
Everybody's out in the hallway?
Um, doesn't matter, I don't care, they could go down.
Whatever they.
I just didn't want them in here making a racket. They can leave as far as I'm concerned, you know, but if they're going to all file back in, that's going to be disruptive and, that's the one, that's the one, you don't need. What a, what a good, that was a great jet, that was a great gesture. Well, he couldn't, no, he had to see the, he had to see the, I get what Nashe did, you know, he saw the tone of the room and.
Well, hopefully it works. Hopefully it works.
This is, you want to, you can turn that in if you're done looking at it from the last one, you can keep it if you want. I think we're just going to come back and continue, but.
Yeah.
I just didn't know, I didn't know if we're continuing one meeting, you know, or giving them, they might say, well, we want to see the surveying, that he's going to survey all these roads. But what Nashe's project, offering, they don't need to see where all the roads are, he's going to give them a clear path right to the beach. I don't know if you could see, could you see, did you have a copy like this?
I couldn't see the aerial, I saw this.
Okay, so what Nashe's saying is he's going to keep this.
Yep.
He's going to give them, he's going to give them 1, 2, 3 lots, and they're going to be able to go, and, and they're going to give up the, and they're going to be able to go right through here. And that is a good solution, because I think that's where the path is now.
If you give it to the Swiss Beach Association if there is one, I wouldn't give it to one for myself, but.
Well, that's a good suggestion, and I, and I'll ask you when we come back in and come off the table, that you add that comment and let it be, you know, heard by everybody. That's why I told the people not to leave, so they could hear, you know, everything. But you got to pee, you got to pee.
Nashe didn't.
You got to.
I got to stretch my legs and my hip.
You want some water, so you'll need, no.
Get some water right here, somebody left.
That's okay, we don't need any more breaks.
We don't waterboard, we bore people to death with one drawn-out meeting. So as soon as our chair comes back, we'll go on, we'll, we'll hear you, but, and he's going to take back over. And you got your check back, right?
Yeah, yep.
Okay, and I've got your check right here, but my name's not on it. No, they're, they're making it to the town of Wareham, Wareham Week as a matter of fact.
We can make the approval easier, we got checkbooks with us.
But they spelt Wareham.
I don't think so either, no. Right, yeah.
I hope they'll take it, because it's Wareham W E A K, not W E E K. No, I'm joking, I'm joking, you spelt it right. Wareham weak, W E A K would mean that Wareham's not very strong. The English language.
How long you been on the board?
How long have I been on the board? This is my second meeting, no. Several years, several years ago, and I don't remember how many, I, I guess it's, I don't know if it's 10 yet, but it's been, it's getting there. Might be 10. Several years ago, I got a call, Jimmy, I would like you to go on the zoning board of appeals, I think you would be good on the board. I don't know, I'll think about it. Just go down, put your application in, you know, there's a process.
Just signature.
You got to sit as an alternate for a while anyway, and they're short alternates. So I said, well, I can always say, I can always resign, so I filled out the application, threw it to the selectmen, and the following week, they called Nashe and me to the selectmen's meeting, and they said, why do you want to be on the board? I don't know, something to do on, you know, Wednesday nights, no, we gave them straight answers. And they said, okay, good, one of you is going to end up being a permanent member and one's going to be a associate member, because we just had a member of the board die. And so now there's another seat open, so, okay. And you're both appointed. So we went to the very next meeting as, and.
Yeah, it's really nice.
Well, we can do this, yeah, okay, neither one of. And at that meeting, somebody was missing, other than the person that died. Well, I'll make the story much shorter.
Yeah, the person died.
Practically the whole board, but two died. One week after the other, after the other. They went from seven people down to three, and the two remaining, of the three remaining, one said, that's it, I'm not going next, I quit. Then we went to another meeting and another one died, and one woman stayed on the board. So Nashe and I ended up going from, we'll give it a shot, to.
You're the chair.
He was the chair and I was the clerk, and we're now the two senior members of the board.
Yeah.
But that was many years ago, and hopefully, hopefully we won't fill the seats by, in the same way.
Don't die anytime soon.
Yeah, people, you know. Did you know that story? You don't like it? You know, well. The thing, the thing is, the thing is, you know that there's a vacancy right now, so nobody's dying to get on the board.
Well, Nashe's not back yet, so.
That's what hap, you know, the second.
After he ain't coming back.
Second meeting we went to, no, the third meeting, the second meeting I went to, I had been voted as the clerk, and they're going, where's the chairperson? So I had his phone number, I'm calling. His daughter finally picked up his phone and said, I can't talk right now. He died then and there.
Same thing, I was the planning board of the Towner Sandwich, same thing, I got voted in, and then the gentleman that, that was supposed to be, I was the alternate, the person that was supposed to show me the ropes, died the week that I got voted in. So I, I learned the ropes from.
Trial by fire.
I went to, to go around, but it's time-consuming, it's not just the meetings, it's reading everything, being prepared, bringing all the paperwork with you.
Yep.
You know, it's not just that, it's more than that.
I think.
I think what's going.
Yeah.
Yeah, right?
Probably Nashe got, Nashe probably got ambushed out in the corridor.
I just talked to him.
We're eating up our recording time, sir.
Huh?
We're eating up our recording time.
We're running out of, you got a new tape? You want to put it, change tapes?
You get roughly four hours.
Yeah? So 6:30 and 4 is 10:30.
Yeah, we had to get you.
And it's 8:30, so that gives me a lot of time before I got to start listening.
How about like five minutes, we'll be in and out real quick, we'll just.
Oh, yeah, you're not going to take long.
We'll blast out.
Are you going to see where Nashe is?
Yeah.
Yeah, if he get, if he get.
I heard you're not going to go, go to the hallway to the right, there's the road to the right.
They can't, they can't, they can't hold a separate meeting out in the hall. Huh? He's got to go, that's all right, we can make a vote without him. You're entitled to five, you're going to end up with four in front of you, but.
I said that, I told him that out there. I went before the other gentleman showed up, I said, well, you're at four, you have to give permission.
We can make a decision, it's just.
As long as it's not split, then it's a problem.
Are they giving it, is that what's going on, they're all out there?
They're in a room, they're not, then the neighbors are in the hallway.
I kind of like the idea of continuing it and letting him come back.
Yeah.
Well, I just, you know, I just don't want any agreements being.
That's all hindsight.
Well, people say, well, you guys let us all go home, then you made a decision that we should have been entitled to hear. That was my concern, remember that night? Here we go. Okay, we're all back, we're back in session.
He's alive.
The zoning board of appeals will hear, hold a public hearing on November 30, 2022 at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number 40-22 for a variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 620, under the Wareham zoning bylaws. under the Wareham zoning bylaws to Kashaw Bat, is my saying it right? Thank you. Of 891 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass., seeking to change, a change of use of the existing three-unit professional building into three residential rental apartments located at 47 Sandwich Road, Wareham, Mass. That appears on assessors map 45 Lot 1014 in MR30 zoning district. Go ahead, Nas.
All right, very well, Mr. Jake Morrison had to leave for an emergency, so we have a board of four. You have the, you could be hurt tonight with four, or you have the right to choose five board member, we continue. But remember, you need four out of four. So either you, you go tonight, or you say, we can open it and continue for next time when you have five members, what's your wishes?
Tonight.
You wanna go tonight, you need four to say yes.
One of us says no, you're dead.
Okay, very well, name and address for the record and state what you wanna do.
Yep, 891 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Massachusetts, 02664. We're looking to convert a three-unit medical professional building to three residential units. It's in an MR30 zone, so residential use is allowed, but we ran into the need for a variance for lot dimensions.
I think you need three variant, three, you're short.
Okay, so you, you, you have a PNS, you wanna buy this commercial property...
Yep.
And convert it to three families, and how many square feet you have there?
On the total lot?
Yes.
Um, it's just shy of 10,000.
Shy of 10,000?
Nine thousand, three hundred and seventy square feet.
Okay, I see this, and, and you know what the zoning is there, right?
Uh, correct, yep, MR30.
MR30, so in order to have three units, you would need 75,000 square feet. You aware of this? First of all, you're gonna need a variance for the change of use, because that's a grandfather commercial, then you needed variance for the square footage. Okay, so what's your argument about the variance for square footage?
Yeah, so we're, we're pretty much working with what the lot dimensions are, it has ample parking. I think that's one of the bigger concerns, is there's nine available parking spaces, and we're, we're definitely comfortable with the amount of parking that's available. We're reducing the traffic flow as well from a medical professional building with three medical professionals to residential, so we're hopefully let the impact in the area is...
Okay, but what is your hardship to have three units? It is unique, I agree with this, it's not detrimental to the neighborhood, but what is your hardship?
Yeah, so the existing structure, we're trying to be conducive to the existing structure of the building, so there's three front egresses, three rear egresses, three zone electric, three gas meters, three zone HVACs. We're trying to be conducive to what the current building layout is to avoid structural changes and effectively just do more floor plan reconfiguration.
Okay, it's still not a strong hardship, but I wanna stop, Mr. Stevens.
The building's three-unit use right now, so I think saying that we're gonna be going to a three, you know, it's... I don't think they're necessarily asking to increase the amount of units that are already in the building, in my mind, looking at it. And so going from commercial to residential, it's already been granted three units.
Are they three separate units, or is...
Yeah, he's saying there's three meters, there's three everything.
But I, I remember it being a doctor's office.
Yeah, Dr. Brown operated with two other medical professionals, I believe from what we were informed, it was a acupuncturist and a nurse practitioner, so there's three separate offices.
Three separate entrances?
Yep.
Three separate reception areas?
Three front egresses, three front rear egresses, three gas meters.
Richard, what do you think, while Jimmy's looking?
I don't, I'm, I'm looking at the current state, sorry, it's, you sent me a plan and it says current state. I don't see three separate entrance, it's all one.
Uh, no, there's three entrances in the front, if you look at the picture of the building...
There's a big picture of the whole front of the building, you can see the three doors.
Yeah.
The center one that we used to use to go into Brown's office, and then the other two, he, at one point, they were three different offices, but then they just made them all his.
One, okay, I see them.
Yep, and so there, on the current floor plan, there are the three front doorways in the front of the building, as well as three in the rear of the building, which has the door swingway.
Sorry, I didn't mean to step on you, Richard, but it's...
That's all right, I'm, I'm...
You've been stepped on before, I see it now.
I'm just going through...
Richard, what do you think?
Nothing at this time.
All right, and the, and the public, unless somebody wants to speak in favor of this project, against, against this project, please come forward, sit down there, sir, state your name.
Markham Scott, 16 Indian Neck Road, Wareham.
Yep.
So I live kinda behind there, and I'm just concerned about what it's gonna do, impact on me.
You live behind with the...
Yeah.
The housing, the Wareham housing?
Next to that.
Right, next to that.
You know where the, the dentist's office is, I'm right behind that.
Oh, okay, all right.
Now, when he put that place in, I never came to any of the meetings, I figured he bought it, let him do what he wants with it. But it's really impacted me a lot. I got, some lady brings her dog there every day and she yells at her dogs at six o'clock in the morning. And then I get headlights going right into my bedroom windows all night, it's just...
Somebody living there already, you say?
No, no, just people pull in there. I'm not, I'm not complaining about that, I'm just saying, I don't know what this, what's this gonna do for impacting my life.
Yeah, I got you, so your address is Indian Neck Road, I'm trying to place it in my mind, your address is Indian Neck Road.
Do you remember the Hilltop Package Store was?
I do, yeah, I know.
My house is literally behind that, in Indian Neck Road, it's in front of my house.
So right behind there is not the Wareham housing?
You're on the right-hand side of the old package store, right?
No, I'm behind it.
Directly behind it.
If you drove through their parking lot, he's in, you'd have to drive through their parking lot...
You could literally drive into my backyard.
Get into your backyard. I always thought that went right back down to that Wareham housing.
No.
Whatever the name of that is.
It was real quiet there, but now it's just, it's just a lot of traffic and they built that big parking lot, people pull in there all night long.
Your front, your, your front yard is Indian Neck Road.
Right.
Yeah, I get it, I get that, but it goes down and hairpins back and, um...
I mean, I, I don't like to tell people, you know, I feel bad.
I get what you're saying.
I just don't wanna be, I don't want my life to be worse than it already is, that's all.
All right, uh, just for the board, just keep in mind, we need a variance on lot area, variance in frontage, variance in front, side and rear setback, and it's not, and here, variance to change the use, so that's four variances.
Can we, can you clarify something for me?
Yeah.
How do, how is it existing as it is with three units and it's commercial? What is, what is the current allowed allowance?
It's a, it's...
Not residential.
Not residential, commercial, it's been there since it was built.
Well, it's MR30, which is residential.
Right.
So...
So it's zoned residential, but it's not used residentially.
Right.
So need a change of use as well.
So I'm wondering what the language is that's allowing it to be three-unit commercial currently?
The language?
Yeah, it's a, right.
It's an existing on, since it was built, a three-unit, where's the tax bill? Do we have it here?
So its current use was allowed?
What?
Its current use was an allowed use in MR30?
Yeah, since it was built, it's grandfather.
Oh, okay, so...
Been there for 50 years, so when it was built, it was, it was allowed, or they got a variance back then? So now you gotta change the use.
Well, that's what I was questioning, is the variance that's currently on the property.
That is, there's, I don't know, we gotta look back 50 years or whatever that building was built.
It doesn't, it doesn't apply to this use.
You know, or back then, it used to be commercial, who knows when it was built? Do you have a tax bill on that?
I do not.
You don't?
I don't know.
It's part of the application, it should be included.
I'm, I'm looking for it here, I don't see it.
I don't see it. But I know that building, it was built a long time ago.
Yeah.
1980.
Probably in the 50s or 60s.
It was built in 1980, sir.
1980?
Yes, sir.
So they're probably, either the zoning was commercial, or they got a variance back then.
The Hilltop and Dr. Brown's office were...
Brown or Fort?
They were stripped commercial.
Oh, back then?
24 Sandwich Road, where the New England Refrigeration used to be, that was stripped commercial.
Oh, and they changed it to Wareham.
And then they changed it to, um, to Village. They've changed the zoning there like three times. No kidding, I mean, you know, somebody just sits down and they say, let's make some zoning changes.
Apparently when Hilltop used to be there, it was allowed use. And as you remember, we granted a variance for the dentist, because that's residential. So...
Oh, okay, I wasn't picturing where it was exactly, I was having a hard time.
Right next to that dentist.
Yeah, yeah.
Not Dr. Fort, the other dentist.
Yes, I know, I know where Hilltop was.
Hilltop and the doctor were once considered part of Wareham, of downtown Wareham. It kinda went around the corner, you know? And everybody came out of Oakdale and bought their booze at Hilltop and...
At the end of the property line, keep the lights from being in your house?
I'm, I'm gonna go talk to him, I haven't done it yet.
Okay, so I understand now.
Would that help lights or anything like that?
Oh yeah, I'll, I'll talk to the gentleman.
And we're willing to do so.
Well, one other time, it's going out of hand, one, ma'am, ma'am, if, one other time, we have to stay on record, sir, go ahead.
We're willing to put a fence up if, if it helps the, the gentleman that's concerned to block any lights, you know, and, and we can work with him to do so.
Ma'am, you wanna speak? No? Anyone else in the room wanna speak? None. I don't know what you guys wanna do, I would like to sleep on it, that's a lot of variance to grant personally.
Yeah.
I think we should drive by, think about it until next hearing.
I don't, I don't wanna, um, I don't wanna end up saying no when we should say yes or vice versa. I, I do, I, I agree with the chair, I gotta tell you, my, my, my initial look at this is you got a, a one, a two and a three. You got three units, one, a one-bedroom, a two-bedroom and a three-bedroom. And, um, so that's a pretty dense use of that property for that, you know, I'm, I'm not a, I'm not saying it wouldn't get filled and rent, it would probably rent faster than you could renovate it, that's not the question, um, but I just think, um, I think it deserves a little bit of thought.
Now legally with the zoning, you're only allowed, you're not allowed to build a house, period, unless we grant you a variance to change the use, and if we grant you the variance, you're only allowed one unit.
So from, when we went from, with Mr. Tucker at the building department, he reviewed it with us and he said that we were allowed to retain the three use, and then he gave, the variance list that he gave was the use was within right, because it's...
Yeah, you're allowed to keep the, definitely, the three units, commercial, medical or whatever. Doctors, lawyers, you're allowed by right, of course, no question asked, but to change the use to residential, you need a variance.
Need three or four or five.
You need, in this matter, you need four variances, that, personally, I think it's a little, little hard. I'd like to sleep on it, personally think about it, I don't know the rest of the board, Richard, what do you think?
Yep.
May I add something before we continue? Wareham is, is in need of affordable housing.
We heard that.
Well, the whole state of Massachusetts in need of housing, we know that.
But we're willing to put a deed rider in to make it affordable, so if that makes a difference to the board, then we're willing to do so. So it would go in perpetuity forever as an affordable unit.
Right.
All three of them.
You gotta, you gotta have a deed rider.
Correct.
Right, and it's gonna be, and somebody gonna manage this, like the Wareham Housing or South Shore Housing.
That's fine, yeah, and we, and we can do it under FMR rules, you know, fourth percentile FMR, and we can do it through, so all...
You have other affordable projects somewhere?
Other affordable projects? I mean, I, I personally manage 107 affordable rentals.
Okay.
I own about 38 of those.
And you, you understand, when you run affordable housing project like this, you need the CPA that files taxes every year, and you cannot make over 20%.
I agree, I, I understand.
You know that, right, and the CPA probably could be costly.
Yeah, it's of gross, not net, but of gross, yes.
We'll see what the, what the, like I said, and that becomes three units, becomes commercial, you're gonna have to protect it, it's gonna need sprinkler on top of that, just to...
I knew that, yeah, I knew that.
It needs to be protected.
So, so the...
Regardless, I, I like to sleep on it and think about it, possible, you know, if you put a deed rider in place and you assign it to Wareham Housing or South Shore to manage it, or if that's, that's, that's the case.
RCAP or Kingston Housing, any, any of those.
Any, any, any agency, I don't see a problem with this, but again, let's...
By, by right, like he's saying, you need 30,000 square feet just to get a single family. Then you could have a three-bedroom house. And then to get a two-family, you need 45,000 square feet. To get a third family in this, in this district, you need an extra 30,000, which gets you, so your, your density is, which really got, you know... And I don't know if the neighbor, you know, you had to do mailing to the whole neighborhood and...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay.
We have one gentleman here, that, you know, if we can alleviate his concerns, we will. I mean, right now, it's a vacant building, falling into disrepair, people are going in there, there's, it hasn't been vandalized yet, but you know it's coming. There, you know, we've been there several times just after dark, cars parked there, probably doing drug deals, my guess. You know, it's, it's...
No, I hear you, I get it.
To, to change what it's currently being used as, because it's, it's not a benefit to anybody, certainly not to town.
I'm thinking of a, I'm thinking of a...
And my thoughts of this, it's just a very small lot to add all this, what happens when Pandora's box is open in that area.
I'm thinking of those people that came in front of us and they wanted to change, they had a, they had two, they had a mixed-use building, they had two offices on the first floor, they had two apartments on the second, and then they wanted to put two more on the third, and we denied them, and they want a much bigger lot. They're gonna see us putting three on 10,000 square feet and say...
I don't think we took, we didn't take any units away from them, Jim.
What did I do wrong?
We didn't, we didn't take any units away from them.
They were trying to make...
We didn't, they were trying to get six, they had four, we kept, they kept four.
We just...
Correct.
We just converted the commercial to residential.
That's what we ended up doing.
Yeah.
Now, if we, if we are to go with the affordable, so we're gonna go with the LIP program, local initiative program, you're gonna have to get an attorney, start drafting deed riders and stuff.
And stay with a LIP, that you can get funding through the government, but it's very difficult and very time-consuming. I mean, we have a, a timeframe and we have to close on this, so if we, if you make a contention on a, a local initiative pro, project, it's gonna be very time-consuming and we'll lose the project, because we're, we're contingent upon closing on this. If we don't get permits, then we, we don't move forward.
All right, but let's sleep on it.
And, and the other thing is...
What's your, what's your proposed, uh, closing date?
27th.
27th of this month, which is not gonna happen, we'll have to extend out.
November or December?
December.
December.
So...
December.
Yeah.
And, and we can't see you for two more weeks.
An appeal period.
And, um, we're gonna, we're gonna, I'm, I'm forecasting we're gonna continue you.
Yes, of course.
But I'm also forecasting that between the four of us, we can search our souls, we should be able to make a decision when you come back.
And if you wanna do a site meeting, I'm more than welcome to, to meet you there to do a site meeting. If it's, you think the density is too tight and we have to reduce it to two, prefer not to do that, because it makes it less palatable to purchase?
I looked at it and I thought, you know, going from three to two, but you've got a three-bedroom, a two and a one, so if we say that to you, you're gonna have two threes. Frankly, I'd rather see a one, two, three than a, a three and a three. Even though the three and a three is probably, the, the second three would be more in demand, you know.
Two bedrooms are actually more to...
Huh?
Two, and that location, a two-bedroom would be more in demand, or even a one-bedroom, because the one-bedrooms, you know, are empty nesters, and if we do through affordable, section eight, there's a high demand for one bedroom.
I hate to see, turn the three, you know, it's not up to me to say, turn the three into a two or something like that. I'm trying to think of the amount of people that are gonna be in that small lot, is what I'm thinking, you know, and a three-bedroom, to me, in my mind, the minute I hear three-bedroom, I hear kids.
Yeah.
And I'm not against kids, I think they're great, everybody should have a handful of them, you know.
Yes.
Chairman, so are we gonna continue this?
Yes.
If we go forward, the discussion?
Let's, let's make that a motion.
Can I have a motion to continue until the December 14?
So moved.
Richard, second by Jim, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining, we'll see you on December 14.
See, do you wanna do a, a meeting there at the location?
Not personally.
We, we all know the location.
We know this area. You will not be notified again. You will not be notified again, so if you wanna attend the 14th, same time, yes. All right, we'll see you guys then, thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, I think what you did earlier was really nice.
Oh, thank you.
I agree with that as well.
Give him that much credit.
Yeah.
Don't let that get around it, he's a nice guy.
All right, councillor, wanna come back forward?
Thank you.
Mr. Mazuru?
Can I have the stuff from this last one back in the folder, please?
That's me.
That's you. Thank you, thank you. That's you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right, so.
Let me put a rubber band around them and get them off my.
So we are back to, can you close that door, please? We're back to 38-22, Richard and Anita Padula, 9 Murphy Street. Counselor, it's yours. So what you guys decided?
We're gonna continue. When is the next meeting?
December 14.
14. Does that work for you? Does that work? Okay.
I mean, you gotta draft these deeds.
Because there's no, probably no second meeting, right, in January?
28.
We're gonna meet.
On December 28.
I'd prefer that actually too, with the holiday. Is that okay? That's okay?
December 28.
Now feel free to call me. You both have my numbers to work on these deeds, okay? And I hope it works out for you and the neighbors and everybody.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very welcome. So a motion, yes, Richard?
So moved.
I was gonna say that you just have to name it Echolasi Park or something like that.
Okay, can we have a motion to continue?
So moved.
For the 28th, counselor?
Thank you, yes.
Seconded.
All right, seconded by Jim. All in favor to continue, say aye.
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 Aye, opposed, abstain. Thank you. So we'll see you on the 28th.
I have another one.
Yeah, she's not done.
We can sit here. Thank you.
That's why I said, thank you, sir. Thank you for.
Thank you. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we've got.
So now we go back to 39-22, clear channel outdoors.
Anything here from Padula that anybody wants to get off the desk before we put this folder away?
No, I think you got everything.
Padula, Padula, Padula. You got any, okay. You want any of that?
You could keep it.
And I believe we have on Zoom, who do you see on Zoom?
You want this stuff?
Jessica.
Actually, keep me this because I gotta walk and throw that deed.
Okay.
Is there Jessica on there?
Just get Padula off the table here so that we don't. What do we have, the clear channel?
Yeah, if you could.
Okay, 39-22.
Okay, yeah, so I have the rest of the parties, the engineer and the applicant, they're on, they're on Zoom here. So I can start and then if there's specific.
I need to read it in, I think.
Yeah, that would be great. Possibly with, if the board wants to see.
Ready?
Ready.
The Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on November 30, 2022, 6:30 PM, Room 320, Wayham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wayham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number 39-22 for a variance from the requirements of Article 11, Sections 111.5, 111.7, and 1127 of the Wayham zoning bylaws to clear channel outdoor. Care of Jillian Morton, 184 Main Street, Wayham, Mass., to add one new digital billboard face to an existing two-sided billboard at 3077 Cranberry Highway, Wayham, Mass., assesses map 10 lot 1001A and 1001B in the CS zoning district. You guys need to see these?
Counselor, you got four members, remember? What do you wanna do?
I like to open it.
You wanna go forward with four?
Open it, yeah.
Open and close, or opening and continue?
If there's any specific. Yes, I'd like to open it with the understanding if there needs more, more time, like with the engineer, then we can continue if necessary.
All right.
Yeah.
So because she has the right to be heard by five members, we will open the hearing. I mean, we already opened and we'll make a motion to continue. What's a good date to continue for you?
Well, I'm sorry. I think you misheard me. I do wanna start the hearing.
She wants to.
I wanna move forward.
Okay, but you understand next time, you can't have five members.
So because it hasn't started?
Not when you open the hearing. The Mullen law applies only.
Oh, because Jake just left.
He has to be present when it's applied, open.
Well, unfortunately, we're gonna have to continue then.
Very well. 14?
Yes.
Okay, can we have a motion to continue?
See you guys in December.
So moved. Second.
Seconded by Richard for 39-22 for clear channel until December 14. Do I have, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain. So that's done.
So this is for the 14th?
Yes. Now on the 14th, Jake can say on it or Troy, because we never discussed it.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're gonna move forward to 41-22, Milia Crab for 16 First Street. Aren't you happy you're the last one?
What's that? It's over here on my, on my left. No, thank you for coming over and, yeah.
Wait a minute, see if that's wrong.
That, that's not, it's not. No, this is something different. I don't know what it is yet, so. Did you get a plan? At the back of your, there's the.
Okay. So just looking at the agenda on the hearings that we have, and I was just noticing that the Dos Amigos, the first one, says January 25, 2022. Is that supposed to be 23?
Yeah, it's probably a scrivnis error. What are we, what are you looking at?
Petition 22, 26, 22.
Counselor. Wanna grab a?
Just says that the.
Those? 2023, right? Yeah, 2023. That's what I'm saying. Thank you. You good? All right, very well.
Good catch. Shows that you're reading it. The Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on November 30, 2022, 6:30 PM in the Room 320 of the Wayham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wayham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition 4122 for a special permit from the requirements of Article 6, Table 628, under the Wayham zoning bylaws by Mila Crab, care of Frank Westgate of 189R Main Street, Wayham, Mass., proposing to construct an addition off the rear of the dwelling located at the existing residence at 16 First Street, Wayham, Mass., that appears on assesses map 38 lot 272 in the R-30 zoning district.
Okay, name another, sir, for record, or whoever's speaking.
My name is Frank Westgate. I did the survey and the plan work for this project, and my office is at 189R Main Street.
Okay, you presenting the case, or you are, ma'am?
Frank is.
Are we into the same situation with the five and the, nobody else can join because we just opened it? Do you understand the five, the?
You need four out of four.
We talked it over. We have a lot of faith in you.
You know, you're dealing with us four and that's it. Nobody else can jump in.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, this project is pretty straightforward, actually. The only reason we need the, the special permit is because of the five-foot setback. The existing dwelling is five feet from the property line, and she doesn't wanna jog it in. It's a single story and there's gonna be a master bedroom and a, and a, and a, you're gonna extend the bathroom, right?
Yeah, it'll be a new bathroom.
Be a new bathroom. So that's about it. And none of the neighbors are opposed to it. She's, she's talked with all of them.
Okay, all right. Well, apparently, as Mr. Our Commissioner Turner explains, on Article 6, it needs, on the dimensional, just need just regular special permit. Mr. Veniers?
I don't see any problem with this.
Jim?
I'm looking kinda quick. It looks like you're just putting a very small addition on.
Basically, it's 12 by 32, right?
Is it?
And it meets the requirements. The total lot coverage is less than 17% and including all the buildings that are there.
Okay, I wish we had a, I guess this is.
Looking on my map question, it says Crab Cove, so you even got a cove named after you.
Well, Jimmy, looking, what do you think, Richard?
I'm, I'm fine with the way it's presented.
Anyone on the public or online wanna speak against or in favor? I hear none. Jimmy?
What are we adding? I don't get what we're adding. That's it?
Yeah, it's just extending that five-foot. By eight feet.
And it's, and it's, and it's gonna be close to the property line on this side? Where's the setback problem?
There's no setback problem.
I thought he said five.
The existing, the existing dwelling does not conform the zoning, because it's only five feet.
Oh, okay, okay. So you're carrying it across, so you're carrying the five feet, okay.
Right, we're not going any closer.
End of story. I'm good.
Okay, would you like to, anything else before we close? Motion, please.
Make a motion to close the public portion of this hearing?
So moved.
Seconded by Richard. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain. It's closed.
I make a motion to grant relief as requested per the plans submitted.
And with the finding not detrimental to the neighborhood.
Correct.
And will stand in condition. So I have that motion by Jim. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ivanka. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain. It carries. Thank you very much.
We're sitting here all night, wasn't it?
Yes, it was.
It was entertaining, too, huh?
It was something.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with your project. Thank you.
So much.
Very well, good luck.
It was the first one, so does that mean you're gonna come back for a bunch more now, now that you saw that?
It's better than TV.
You too. Good luck with your project.
There you go.
Have a good night. Thank you.
You know?
All right.
Yellow stone, watch out.
See me go out the door, I can never.
Anything, guys, would you like to discuss?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I gave everybody a discriminatory harassment policy.
This is it.
And everybody rip, turn to the back page.
And I signed it?
Sign it and throw them in your folder and give them back to Sonia.
So just my.
Oh, this, give back this, Sonia?
Give that page back to Sonia and keep the rest for yourself so you know how to discriminate.
So just for the record, I filled these out and I read the compliance and it said that I could give it to the person who sent me the email that went out, probably what, three months ago? I handed a copy and I emailed it to Ken Buckland and he responded, "Thank you," so. I don't know if I need to do another one or they, I didn't.
Nope, if you've, if you've already done it within a year, you don't need to do it again. It said that in the email. It came, the email came out today just to call, board chairs and clerks, make sure everybody on the board has done this.
All right.
Rather than go through it, I just figured, here, everybody sign it, turn it in. They can't have too many, but if you're good, you're good.
I believe I'm good, but I've been wrong before.
I'd say throw it in your folder. When Sonia goes through the folders, she'll find it. She'll be happy.
Anything else? If it's needed, she can throw it back in and I'll sign another one.
There you go.
Anything else, guys?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Before we adjourn, I wanna discuss something that I discussed with the commissioner. Now that the highway is pretty.
Is that from the last one that we just passed? Is there anything there that needs to go back in a folder?
I've given it all, given it all back.
You got anything that needs to go, nope, good.
So now that the highway, Jim, which is named, didn't sign it, Jake, he doesn't have any.
Jake doesn't have one. I gave him one to read. That's all right.
Harasa. Let me see if it's here somewhere.
Now that the highway is almost.
Oh, oh, right here. Sorry. My bad. Good thing we didn't throw it away. He didn't sign it.
Put it in his folder.
I took my folder home last week and she was, told me not to do it anymore.
Anyway, I discussed with Mr. Turner earlier, maybe a couple of months ago, now that the highway is getting close to be done, that all these permits we granted, that people with projects, they're supposed to do landscaping and maintain them. A lot of these people put these shrubs and that's the end of it. So, Mr. Turner, I agree with him that we should start cracking on those, that the permit was issued that you have a landscaper and they provide a contract to maintain them, to care the trees and the grass, not to just leave them. Now, we understand the highway was going and, and, I mean, during the construction, they're gonna do it, but just to let everybody know, we, I think we should start cracking on those.
I totally agree.
Who is not taking care of the property. It looks like horrible.
Yeah, I've driven by a couple that we've said yes to, well, one in particular that I can think of, and it's very aggravating.
Horrible, yeah. I mean, like just, yeah, yeah, here's your shop and goodbye. So I think the planning board coming down also finally on Starbucks, because they always had that dumpster outside, which I talked to them many times. Two dumpsters. Oh, they said they don't fit in a cage. I said, make it fit.
Get a different size.
Chairman King went after them and said, you gotta, according to your permit, you have, and I saw him fixing it the other day, which is good. So we gotta keep the pressure on all these businesses. I mean, apparently, they're doing good.
And not for nothing, do we, who's in charge of the solar fields? Because I, I believe that when we give these, I believe that was by right, but you're supposed to have trees growing and things dying. I see that thing right through.
On Toby Road, for instance. Right, this is a.
Who was in charge of?
Ever Source, I think, was in.
Yeah, but that's a planning board permit, but the commissioner is the enforcing officer. He could send them a letter, say, hey, there's so many trees dead, replace them or cut your grass or whatever.
Well, I think the majority of these electric fields have let all that go.
Right, so what I'm trying to get to, that us as a board, we have to be very supportive of the commissioner of what he does when he start going, doing that.
I think we've been good for him. We went and showed up over at the Woodland Hove there.
He's a good guy.
He seems like he wants to do the right thing.
He does, he does. He's great. He follows up.
We wanna encourage him to continue to do the right thing. I think that's your point.
Support them, correct.
And I agree.
He's great. He follows up.
I heard it.
All right. Anything else? Okay, now we can motion to adjourn.
Now we can move to adjourn. I moved to adjourn.
I'll second.
Seconded by Richard. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain.
Deny. Oh, no, no, I'm gonna change. No, sorry, sorry. I missedpoke.
Simple, but you're gonna adjourn.
Hey, I think we waited long enough in here. I think the rain stopped.